I recall the February 4th, 2020 Kentucky Board of Education meeting to order. I want to welcome back all the members, those who've traveled early and got here before anybody else, Patrice. I'm proud of you.
Thank you. I accept the award.
For those folks who are viewing on the webcast, the agenda may be found online at the Kentucky Department of Education website. I want to thank the individual in the back who is doing the closed captioning. We appreciate your assistance. I also want to remind everyone that the cellphones or other mobile devices need to be muted or turned off. If someone's mobile device, sir, if your mobile device goes on, I'm going to come take it away from you. Very good. Jennifer, would you please do the roll call?
Yes. Joanne Adams.
Here.
Claire Bat.
Here.
Holly Bloodworth.
Here.
Mike Bowling.
Here.
Alvis Johnson.
Here.
David Karam.
Here.
Patrice McCrery.
Here.
Cody Polly Johnson.
Here.
Sharon Porter Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Coleman. CPE President Aaron Thompson.
Here.
Allison Sloan.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Jennifer. The first order of business is approval of minutes from several meetings. The first meeting that requires approval of minutes is the December 4th, 2019 regular meeting. While we were not in attendance at that meeting, the procedure requires, for the purposes of the record, to approve those minutes. So may I please have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 4th meeting?
So moved.
Sharon has moved and Michael has seconded. All those, are there any firsts? I guess I should also say, are there any corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The next order of business is approval of the minutes from the December 12th, 2019 special meeting. If there are any additions or corrections, seeing no additions or corrections, Claire has moved and Alvis has seconded that those minutes be approved. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the January 17th, 2020 special meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Lou has moved and Joanne has seconded that those minutes be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. The next order of business is report of the President of the Council on Post-Secondary Education. Alvin is here, prepared to address that.
Well, close. Aaron is.
Aaron, why does that say that?
Don't get us mixed up all the time, Mr. Chair. That's not odd.
Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's good to be here this morning. Couple of things that I'll talk about here in a second, but before, I will tell you that most of you know that for the last year and a half or so, I've been on a listening tour throughout the state, going to almost every region of the state, talking to over 3,000 people, and trying to find out exactly why higher education matters. And, you know, I found out a few things that I think this board would probably want to hear about. I mean, one of the things we found out from high school students, as a matter of fact, in many ways, that many feel as if they can't go to college, or they can't afford to go to college. And once we dug deeper on this, we found out that many, first of all, didn't know what college was. You know, when we told them it was anything beyond high school, whether it was a one-year certificate, or a two-year degree, or a four-year degree, then, in many cases, many of these young people livened up. I mean, first of all, we've got to do a better job of letting people know that college is, first of all, crucial to their success, and they can go. The second thing we found out, in many ways, as I said earlier, is that there's a perception that they can't afford to go. And in many cases, they just didn't know how to pay for it, or no one had given them the information about how to proceed, whether it's with a FASFA or other forms of financial aid, to get to that point of going to college. Couple other things we found out, even high-performing kids we talked to, many felt like they weren't ready for college. And once we dug deeper into this, it just wasn't about the academics, it was about whether or not they perceived college as being so different than what they were used to in high school, whether or not they could transition emotionally, culturally, and other ways to get to the point of being a successful college student. So this really taught us a little bit about why we, at that time, only had about a 53.5% college-going rate from high school seniors who graduated to college. Well, I'm sad to say that our latest data show that we have a 51.7%. It's going down. And there's no way we can get to where we need to go in this state economically unless we get more of these young people to get into college and get a credential that matters. The other thing we found out, talking to college students, we asked them, what would be the one thing you wished you had have had in high school, when you were in high school, that would have helped you to be successful in college uniformly? We found out that they said, we wish we had a course or something that told us what college was, how to study for college, how to manage your time, how to finance college. I mean, this was uniformly, and we didn't prompt them to say this, and it was from all across the state, from the mouth of babes, right? And the other thing we found out with college students, that many are getting into a point whereby they start out with great intentions, but then they get to the college and found out that, well, maybe that college is not for them, or that they didn't have enough money to get through, once they got there. So this is a big issue that many of our institutions are picking up with need-based aid and helping more of our students to be successful. The other thing we found out with students that had graduated, I had a chance to talk about 50 or 60 of those students, so maybe not a super-representative sample, but one that I think gives us a direction, and that is that many were feeling that they got through college, got a degree, and didn't know what to do with the degree. So this is causing us to look at our policy on general education. So I think this board literally has some reasons to think about some of the conversations that we found out, and what we can do to truly increase the likelihood that all of our students coming out of Kentucky will, first of all, have a good, equitable education, but that in fact, they know the importance of higher education in their lives. And we hear people say all the time that higher education, well, not everybody needs to go to college. Well, data tells us something totally different, that they do. They may not need to get a four-year degree, but they need to go to college. One of the things we've done over the last year, we looked at the cohort of 2010 high school students that graduated, which ended up being about 43,000 students. We followed those students throughout the next eight years to find out what happened to them. So we did a return on investment, and we looked at lots of stuff, and I won't go in great detail, you may have seen the report that came out. But to whatever extent we wanted to find out exactly what happened to these students, and eight years after high school graduation, by the way, about 32,000 of those students, I mean, not 32,000, about 32% did not go to college. But we found that those that got out earned about $12,000 more than those that had a high school diploma. And the state, we are always talking about the return on investment for the student, well, we have to look at the return on investment for the state. We found that the state invested about $40,000 per public post-secondary student through general appropriations and financial aid, such as keys and cap. In return, the student generated a little over, under $12 million in the lifetime through taxes. The state's investment for the total cohort was about $630 million, which generated about a $44 billion return. So we argue that there's no better investment than higher education when you look at how to get Kentucky out of the fifth place in the poverty rankings. We are also hosting a Comebacker convening here fairly soon, February 6th and 7th, at the Lowell Marriott East. We have to get many of these students who are adult learners to come back to higher education. We figure we have about 600,000 that fall into these, where they need to fall into to get some college degree. And the place is packed, so we invite you to come. We'll have you as a special guest. We've been talking a lot, from Budget Review Subcommittee's to Education, to a lot of folk, about why they should be looking at, in fact, investing in higher education. We appreciate the governor. I've been in Frankfort now almost 12 years. This is the first time we've not been proposed to have a cut, so that makes me happy. The 1% is a start, and I appreciate the governor for putting that on the table. We obviously like to have more, but we are appreciative of what the governor put on the table for us. We've also been receiving grants. As you all know, my office has been cut about 57% over the last many years, and we've been very blessed to have a lot of partners and foundations that want to invest in what we're doing in Kentucky. So we got another grant from Lumina, thank goodness Lumina, to help us to really look at some of the things we've been doing along the lines of employability outcomes. We've got some on equity and other items. One last piece of good news I'll report, and then my report will be over unless you have questions, is that Kentucky, as you all know, we've got some issues around gaps, and we've got to admit that. We're not satisfied in post-secondary, but we're happy to say our latest data show that we've had about 11% over the last five years increase in credentials and degrees, and this is in 11-plus straight years of cuts. So we're happy with that. But we're also happy to say our underrepresented minorities increased by 27%, at one of the largest gap closing in the nation. So we're happy to report that. If you look at the low-income and underrepresented groups together in a triangulated way, we had about a 23% increase. So we're doing things that matter. As you all know, in our new admissions policy that we wrote when I came in, you can no longer offer a developmental ed course for no credit at our four-year institutions, and our two-year institution only one. And that has helped tremendously to get many of our students through these credit-bearing courses and into the next course, and they're being very successful. We've got some news to come up and tell you, maybe next time, Mr. Chair, on our dual credit. We've got some good news on that. We'd be happy to share with you. I think you folk will be really interested in it. Once again, we're showing our dual credit is going strongly in closing some of these gaps that we're all so concerned about. That's my report, sir. Happy to answer any questions that you or the board may have.
Thank you, Aaron. Any member of the board have a question? Alvis?
Mr. Chair, you know, it appears to me that the way to attack this thing is from the counselors and the advisors at the high school level. I mean, being in the high school for over 30 years, I found it to be true, a number of kids don't get the information from the counselors. So they don't know about curriculum path, they don't know about financial aid. So it appears to me that we need to do a better job with our counselors and our advisors at the high school level, and even at the middle school level. I think that would certainly increase the students' knowledge about what they want to do and how they can get to where they are. You know, to me, that probably is the most simple suggestion that I would have, that we've got to get our counselors and our advisors to buy into how important it is for them to give that information to the students that they serve.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I attended the CPE meeting, and I took good notes, and I immediately came back and spoke with Dr. Damian Sweeney and Dr. Ellis. Dr. Sweeney is our counselor consultant, and he's working hard on those issues. As everyone knows, one of the problems is our counselors are asked to do way too many things. So we have to work through that, and hopefully, as we add more mental health professionals into our schools, that will also assist counselors. But we need more counselors, but we also need to be paying attention to what, and your listening to is a good example of what we're hearing. So Dr. Sweeney is on that, and he wants to follow up with your folks for some more details.
Absolutely, and this is something we can work on together. Let me just make a point that Commissioner Brown just made. Our counselors are overworked, folks. They're doing a whole lot of stuff. That's why I argue that somehow we need to get more college and career folks in there. We need to probably revamp the counseling education portion and post-secondary, too. I cannot believe I didn't mention this, the biggest thing that came out from our high school students and college students were the issues of mental health. And it was just massive. It's growing so fast, we can't even measure it, to be honest with you. And not at the P-12 or the post-secondary. And this is of great concern. And this, once again, should be another item that post-secondary and P-12 will pick up to look at together.
Mr. Chair, I would just add, you may have seen the social media messages this week that it is School Counselors Week. So thank you for acknowledging that and recognizing, and thanks to all the school counselors who really do have a heavy burden in the state, when you think about the size of their caseloads, but the critical importance of the work that they do to make sure every kid understands what their opportunities for post-secondary are.
You know, one of the things that came out of the December 12th meeting that we had when we all introduced ourselves was Aaron's life story. And I truly believe, and I've heard from board members and from people who saw it online, it was one of the most, your story was one of the most compelling stories that anyone had ever heard. And probably, Alvis, it would really help if we could get like a six-minute video of your life, and explain, and to some of you students, this is a, tell me if I'm right here, Aaron, not just the first in his family to go through college, not the first in his family to go through high school, and so, and one-room house early in his life.
A three-room house, one had a dirt floor, yeah.
Okay, so unbelievable story. So there are messages out there that kids need to hear. Holly?
Yes, the research, the return on investment research, is that on your website?
It is, and we have a full report that you can read. There's so much in there that if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, you really should. No other state has done it this way. We did it student by student. We looked at each student, and we plan on following, if I can find more money, even beyond the eight years, to see exactly what happens down the road. It was clear in this, those that did not go to college didn't get nearly, it's so obvious, and this is Kentucky-specific. This is not these big, general, aggregate stuff you see out of Georgetown and DC. This is Kentucky-specific. It is.
Sharon, and then Mike, and then we're going to move on to the next item.
So we have certainly identified the counseling services as a way to intervene. But I sometimes concern myself with, our students don't see, they see themselves going to school, but they don't see themselves going to work. I really do wonder how can, and Hosa's here, so I really wonder how we can help all teachers, encourage all students to think about going to work, and giving, helping them to develop a vision for where they're going with this education, and put it in context. I'm not saying that work is before education, I'm saying education is for us to contribute through work.
It should be from P through employment, in my opinion, and not P through college. And I think this is the item, at least, that I know we're focusing on, that it's, it really is about not just getting into the workforce, but how to be successful and get those skills to be successful in the workforce.
Mike?
Okay, Aaron, I was privileged to serve on the Workforce Development Committee that put out $100 million to the various area technical schools, and they were in a position where they worked with many outside businesses and things like that. And we found out during that, that this whole area of dual degrees, and I'm glad that you're going to talk about that the next time, but we actually were able to leverage that $100 million into $278 million. The first time the state has ever put that kind of money into dual degrees and into an area where there was a tremendous need, especially in western Kentucky, there's tremendous industry out there that are looking for people that are well-trained in computer technics and that type of thing. So, you know, that's why, when you look at your numbers and talk to us about the dual degree things, I'm interested in seeing what this 278 million has done for getting students to track both of those ways, you know, higher education and vocational.
And we've got some data on that. Be happy to share quickly, Mr. Chair, and we're out of time. We found out, since that's been in place, that those credentials have increased tremendously for the needs of the state. 75% of our degrees and credentials that we've given out over the last five years have been in the STEM or technical-related area, both foreign too.
Thank you, Aaron. Next item on the agenda is report from the Commissioner of Education, Kevin Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The full Commissioner's report is attached to your, on your system and available for the public to review. I will not go through the entire report. I do want to begin, though, by recognizing new KDE staff, because I need them to get back to work. Office of the Commissioner, when I read your name, if you'll please stand, and if we can hold the applause to the end. Office of Commissioner, Tony Cons Tatman. Office of Finance and Operations, Tanya Bradshaw. Caitlin Comley. Jerry Roberts. Office of Education Technology, Stephen Thomas. Shawna Dunham. Holly Kell. Robert Ambach. Office of Educator License and Sure in Effectiveness, John Pace. Office of Continuous Improvement and Support, Wes Blake. Lee Bowling. Elise Crisp. Jody Dempsey. Office of Special Education and Early Learning, Julie McCown. Jennifer Riley. Jared Sloan. And Office of Career and Technical Education and Student Transition, Connie Witt. We want to thank all of those for being here. We want to thank the ones that were not here for their out and about and around the state and doing their jobs, so please join me in welcoming these folks. Just a brief update on the Commissioner search. As the board knows, the board set the selection and hiring process in motion at the December 12 special meeting. Since that time, the board voted to create an RFP evaluation team. That team met on January 30th to review vendor proposals, and they're going to make a recommendation to the full board later on at today's meeting. And as you remember, to prepare for the Commissioner search process, the KBE directed KDE staff to create a survey, and that survey went live to determine characteristics that the public want in the next commissioner. That survey went live on Tuesday, January 21st. It closes February 6th. I'm pleased to report that as of a few minutes ago, we had 3,268 responses, and that's continuing to grow. So if you have not taken that survey, please, it's on all of our social media channels. Please take the survey. The Impact Kentucky Survey, more specifically described in my report, but I just want to point out that the Impact Kentucky Survey replaced the Tell Kentucky Survey, and that's open to certified educators on January 13th and runs through February 21st. That's a very important survey on the working conditions in our schools. The Commissioner's Student Council, we just appointed 11 Kentucky public high school students to the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council. That council is treated just like any other advisory council, and their agenda, as long as I'm here, is going to be the same, or exactly the same, as we ask our principals, our teachers, our local school board members, to advise us on policy that we end up bringing to the state board. And so I'm really excited to meet with them for the first time. Kentucky School for the Blind and Kentucky School for the Deaf updates. Just a reminder, as the board knows, these are your two schools. We will always have a KSB and KSD update in the Commissioner's report. I just want to point you to that in your report for more details. There's a lot of, many great things going on at both those schools. I was able to attend the Mason-Dixon Tournament at KSD. Unfortunately, KSD lost, but it was a great tournament and a way to showcase our school to the other Schools for the Deaf in the South. And I also was able to attend the KSB Holiday Program before the holidays. That was an excellent program, and it blended Kentucky musical artists in with holiday theme. It was a textbook example of how you can legally do a holiday program in a public school while showcasing your state's talent. And I'm not sure if we taped that or recorded that program, but it was excellent. The Bugler was there from Churchill Downs to begin the program, and he stayed throughout the whole thing. Other Kentucky artists, it was amazing. And finally, I want to introduce Aaron Ball, the Kentucky Teacher of the Year. I'm going to ask Aaron to come forward. Aaron has taught language arts at Georgetown Middle School throughout her six-year teaching career. She earned her bachelor's and master's degrees at Georgetown College. She's a member of the Teacher Effective Leadership Network for Scott County Schools. She serves on the Georgetown Middle School Leadership Team and is an eighth-grade team leader for her school. She served on the school's School-Based Decision-Making Council and as a cooperating teacher for a student-teacher candidate. She was named 2019 Scott County Middle School Teacher of the Year and was the 2018 Teacher of the Year for Georgetown Middle School. In May of 2019, she was selected as the 2020 Kentucky Teacher of the Year, which offers the winner a $10,000 cash prize and a semester-long term of service at the Kentucky Department of Education. And we call this a sabbatical for her. She probably would rather be back in her classroom, though, but we did her for a semester. Kentucky did not start doing this with the Teachers of the Year until approximately four years ago, and other states had done a sabbatical, and so we're so pleased that she's with us. During the semester, she's obviously joining us and working with us, but she's sharing with us her passion for closing Kentucky's racial achievement gap. She's going to participate in a variety of projects and represent KDE at public appearances, and most recently, she was selected as an ambassador to the Go Teach Kentucky campaign. I've asked her to say a few words. I want to offer her our thanks and congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and thank you all for hosting me. He is right, I do miss my classroom. As the 2020 Kentucky Teacher of the Year, I'm honored to be an ambassador for public education. I'm passionate about promoting the profession, because I think teaching is an honorable and rewarding career and a worthwhile investment. And so, like many of you, I come from a long line of teachers. Both my great-grandmothers taught in one-room schoolhouses, first through eighth grade in Mason County. My great aunt taught elementary school for 31 years. My grandmother taught Sunday School for 20 years, and my mom was a public school, middle school math teacher for 31 years in Canton County. My youngest sister is in her first year of teaching right now, third grade in Canton County, and my younger brother is completing his student teaching right now in Grand County. In addition to my family, a lifelong love of reading that was cultivated for me really early in life by several impactful teachers influenced me to become a teacher. In second grade, Mrs. Crabtree introduced me to a whole new world through books. She saw early that I had an interest, and she cultivated it every way she could. She regularly asked me what I was reading. She challenged me with higher books. She asked me my interests and genres and connected me with specific books in light of those interests. And because of Mrs. Crabtree, I blossomed as a reader. And inspired by her influence, I strive to cultivate a love of reading in my eighth graders at Georgetown Middle School. And my favorite way to connect with my students is by connecting them with books that they'll love. I relish the moments when a student returns after they've read a recommended book and they want to either talk about it or request another. For me, those are the moments that are the most rewarding for me in teaching. Currently, I'm pursuing my library science degree at Eastern Kentucky University with the hopes of being a middle school librarian someday, and it was through my studies at EKU and an influential professional development by one of my favorite authors, Donna Lynn Miller, that I began to understand the importance, not only of connecting my students to books, but connecting them to diverse texts. And when I realized that, the importance of giving my students access to texts and characters to which they could relate to, I set out to fill my classroom with those books. And so, like any teacher, I searched Goodwill and used bookstores and scholastic book fairs and used my classroom funds towards this, and I saw success with this almost immediately. I recall one student in particular, who was not interested in reading, wasn't interested in academics, and was a high flyer with behavior coming to me with a book I had recommended to her and saying, do you have any more like this? And that was really pivotal for me. I wanted more, so I filled my classroom with those and set out to get more, and I saw them, request them more and more. Everyone benefits from diverse literature. Reading books from many voices and perspectives not only fosters empathy and awareness, but also helps to develop our students into people who value diversity, who care about the world, who care about other people. Everybody wants... Everybody wants to see their, themselves in the stories that they read, and I believe that all children deserve to see themselves in the stories that they read, and it's important that we communicate to them that their stories and their family's stories matter. I like this quote, it says, "Students benefit from mirrors and windows. The mirror representing the story that reflects their own culture and helps them build their own identity, and the window that offers them a view into someone else's experience." And those mirrors and windows come not only from literature, but also from teachers. And research overwhelmingly supports that students benefit from having a diverse group of teachers from a variety of backgrounds. Research shows that a student's exposure to people who are different from them leads to improved cognitive skills, including problem-solving and critical thinking. Regular interactions with individuals from a variety of races and ethnic groups, especially in childhood, can help combat stereotypes, reduce implicit biases both in and outside of the classroom. And in addition to windows, it's also important for our students to have mirrors, people who are reflecting back to them their own language, their culture, their ethnicity, and their religion. And my own experience in school was sadly lacking in diversity. When I look back at my own education, I don't recall having a single minority teacher ever in my K-12 experience. So I had plenty of teachers that looked like me, lots of mirrors, and not nearly enough windows, and for far too many of our students across the Commonwealth, they're severely lacking windows or mirrors. And the lack of a racially diverse teacher workforce is a critical equity issue in our state. During the 2018-2019 school year, minorities made up 23.9% of our student populations, almost one-fourth, but only 4.8% of our teacher population. And the future of our Commonwealth depends on us recruiting high-quality teachers, and if we want to ensure that every student in Kentucky has access to a world-class education, every student from every race and ethnicity and background, we must begin to make meaningful strides towards increasing the racial diversity of our teacher workforce. I'm still working on what my best contribution towards this will be, but a big part of my platform as Kentucky Teacher of the Year will be partnering with the efforts of others doing this important work of hoping to ensure that our teacher population best matches our student population across the state. There are several wonderful initiatives and programs in Kentucky right now aimed at increasing the number of minority teachers through recruitment and retention, and I have been and hope to continue exploring these initiatives to figure out the common barriers to minority recruitment as well as sustainable solutions. So far, my exploration has taken me to Jefferson County, and I'm working with Donna Milton, the Coordinator of the Kentucky Teacher of the Year Program, to schedule additional sessions in Murray, Bowling Green, Hopkinsville, Covington, Lexington, Frankfurt, and other districts where minority recruitment and retention is of paramount focus. I appreciate any suggestions you might have on who I should meet in the areas that you represent, both inside and outside of the school environment, and I'd like to challenge myself to return at the end of my ambassadorship to share with you what I've learned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[772.13][772.13](Applause). Any member have a comment or question for Aaron? I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's great, go ahead.
If you're a teacher, you've...
Yes, I'm familiar.[789.13][789.13](Laughter).
Well, first of all, great, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
But what you're working on is crucial, and you probably know if you've done your exploration, by the way, I think you quoted me in your research, so thank you. But we are working on this at CPE, so I hope we get a chance to talk.
I would love that, I would love that.
You know, I think it is crucial that this is an item that we all focus on board. I appreciate Aaron like bringing it to the forefront, so I would love to have my staff work with us.
Awesome, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much, Aaron, we appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is good, is good news items. We've reintroduced the good news items to, I think all of us remember from the December 12th meeting, we talked about reintroducing the good news items because there is an enormous amount of wonderful positive things that are happening in this Commonwealth, and we need to share with those who watch and care about public education. And so, that'll be a regular agenda item on, on our meeting agendas from now on. Today, we're going to talk a bit about the National Career and Technical College Education Month, that's what February is. So every February, the national TE community celebrates CTE Month to raise awareness of the role that CTE has in readying our students for careers and college. CTE Month is also a time to recognize and celebrate the CTE community members' achievements and accomplishments nationwide. Each year is part of Kentucky's annual CET Month, CTE Month celebrations. A Student Leadership Day is hosted at the State Capitol. This year's event, which is scheduled for February the 11th, will allow hundreds of CTE students from across Kentucky to learn about the legislative process and provide the opportunity for one-on-one advocacy with their senators and representatives. With almost 138,000 students engaged annually, Kentucky CTE students are preparing for careers in virtually every workforce sector and many of the state's most in-demand, high-wage occupations across the state and nation. In these pathways, students are able to acquire necessary academic and technical skills related to their specific career pathway while having the opportunity to also demonstrate essential employability skills through work-based learning opportunities such as shadowing, internships, entrepreneurships, and even registered youth apprenticeships. One of the most critical and unique CTE involvement includes the co-curricular student leadership organization. These organizations allow CTE students to develop critical leadership skills, demonstrate civic engagement through service learning in their local communities, and allow for the demonstration of skills through competitive events at the regional and state/national level. We're honored to have today a student representative from each of Kentucky's nationally recognized career and technical student organizations, CTSOs. And as we call your name and organization, will you please stand and be recognized? And I will defer to four of the members of the Board to make those introductions. First, Lou Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a pleasure for me, right before the meeting, to be able to meet these folks from my region, and I'm delighted to be able to share them with you. So as you guys would stand up when I call your name, and please stay standing until we have all of you recognized. One of our student-led career/technical organizations is DECA. It focuses on marketing education. And with us today is Madison Hep, who is the State Vice President of Community Service for DECA, and she hails from Scott County High School.[1046.73][1046.73](Applause). Models stay standing, thanks, Madison. From the Kentucky Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA, which is an organization for family and consumer sciences educations, education, we have Logan Justice, who is the State First Vice President, and he hails from Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School.[1073.04][1073.04](Applause). From the Kentucky FFA, an organization for agricultural education, we recognize Haley Nelson, who is the State President of FFA, and she's from Western Hills High School in Franklin County.[1091.33][1091.33](Applause). And from the Kentucky Technology Student Association, TSA, an organization for engineering, information technology, and computer science students, we have Afif Sheikh, who is the State President of Kentucky TSA, and he is from Franklin County High School.[1114.41][1114.41](Applause).
Next, we'll go to Patrice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I echo what Lou said. What an absolute pleasure it was to walk down through this line of students and see how bright our future looks. So thank you for being here today. I have the honor and the privilege of introducing Samuel Bringers. He is from the second district. He is representing the Kentucky Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, that association, which is an organization for students enrolled in business education courses. He is at Bullet East High School. Welcome, Samuel.[1157.33][1157.33](Applause).
Next, Holly.
Yes, it's really nice to have faces here that remind us why we do this work. So, I'd like to welcome from the Kentucky HOSA, Future Health Professionals Association, Michaela Nelson. She's the State President from Franklin Simpson Career and Technical Center.[1182.04][1182.04](Applause).
And Michael.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for taking time to come and be recognized. We're very interested in finding out the various organizations that work in your school systems with you all and have gotten you guys motivated to go to these higher levels in these organizations. We, I know that everybody here on the Board recommends that you continue to reach for the highest levels in all these organizations because you learn, you meet people, and you find out Kentucky's a very small state, and you get to know a lot of people in Kentucky. At this point, I'd like to introduce Christine Webb. Christine is from the Kentucky Skills USA Association, an organization that prepares students for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations, which is an area that I'm very, very interested in. So it's my privilege to introduce Christine Webb from Monroe County Area Technical Center.[1267.23][1267.23](Applause).
Could we ask everyone, please, to stand and recognize these unbelievably wonderful students?[1280.13][1280.13](Applause). Thank you all very much and for being here, and you're excused.[1300.58][1300.58](Laughter).
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the report from the Jefferson County Public Schools. This is an update by Superintendent Marty Polio, and Marty, if you'll come forward.
Well, Dr. Polio, Mr. Chair, if I may, while Dr. Polio is coming to the table, as I mentioned at the retreat, on December 18th, when I began service as interim Commissioner of Education, I appointed and delegated under state, as permitted under state law, all duties related to Jefferson County Public Schools to Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster, and she's there on the front row. And as a result, I've recused myself from decisions specifically involving JCPS, and I'm going to temporarily leave the table while Dr. Polio gives his report.
When you leave the table, we promise we won't talk about you.[1360.41][1360.41](Laughter).
Dr. Polio included.
That may not be true.
It's good to see you, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pleased to have you here.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me here. Usually I jump right in, but being that I'm sitting in front of a new Board, I kind of wanted to catch up on where we've been over the past about 16 months through this corrective action plan and kind of give you, walk you back how this all started. So, in February of 2017, spring of 20, or late winter 2017, about three years ago, Commissioner Pruitt, at that time, announced an audit of JCPS. At that time, I was a principal in JCPS, and then shortly thereafter, in July 1 of 2017, I became the acting superintendent. At that time, we waited the better part of that school year, 1718, to get the report given to us. And as well documented, we received the report from the state in May of 2018. Commissioner Lewis then, at that time, recommended a state management, and we went through a pretty significant process of working with the state to come up with an agreement moving forward. That agreement was signed in October 1 of 2018. At that time, I'd become the permanent superintendent, and we took the audit that was released to us that had some significant recommendations and really things we needed to prove on, being candid about the things that we needed to do. We developed a corrective action plan around October that we agreed on with the Board, the Kentucky Board at that time, and our Board, and it had 276 actions or deficiencies that Jefferson County Public Schools had to address, which is the corrective action plan. Those deficiencies were really listed in 10 different areas that I'll show you here in a second. And over the past 14 months, this has been quite the lift for us in what we are trying to do, which is correct all of these things. And as you look at the corrective action plan, which you have access to, and now it's thousands of pages with evidence, we have been challenged to correct all 276 items in a two-year period. And right now, we're about 17 months in, 16, 17 months in, and so we've got seven or eight months until KDE will come back in next fall and do that second audit per the agreement. Part of the agreement was also that I would come and sit in front of you at your Board meeting and bring you a report of our status update. But along with those 276 items in the 10 significant areas that require correction at 155 schools, making sure that we have compliance in these areas, many of them are compliant-type issues, but many of them are deep things that we really have to work on and correct. So for instance, having an instructional vision across all 155 schools. I've said it often, that I thought in JCPS, we were really a district of schools as opposed to a school district in the past, where we have an instructional vision across 155 schools. The work of a school district, as some of you well know, especially those with many schools, you know, it's a balance between creating a vision but still letting a school shape that for their specific culture, but having a clear vision around instruction that you want to have at every single school that's going to provide the outcomes that you want for students. And so, the corrective action plan alone, those 276 items, would be a lift for any district to make sure they get those 155 things, but still now also fixing and addressing issues such as instructional management, student assignment, facilities, all of these things, and I'll touch on a couple of them as we move forward, are major changes for our district. So over the past couple of years, we have been in the midst of not small change, medium change, but major change. We still have a ways to go, we're proud of where we've gotten to this point, but we are confident we will be successful in this work as I continue to report to you. So I'll go over those, talk a little bit about our instructional vision, and then take any questions that you have. These are essentially the 10 areas of the corrective action plan: instructional management, career and technical education, early childhood, personnel management, operations, IDEA, planning, finance at the district, finance at schools, and safe crisis management. And those constitute the 276 actions across all of those areas that we've had to address. I want to reiterate, addressing this does not just mean at central office implementing changes. It means building a system, making sure that personnel that are impacted by these areas are implementing these systems in 155 schools across thousands of employees, putting those systems in place, and then having that training and oversight to make sure that it's happening at each and every school. So that, as you can imagine, is quite the challenge. So each month, as I've come here over the past 16, 17 months since October of 2018, we have taken two of the items, and I report the status update on two of the items. So we are now through our second round through these, and as you can see, the process will finish up by doing planning and finance district in April, finance at the school level, and safe crisis management in June. That will complete two full cycles of the work, and then we will have our audit to show the progress that we have made. This gives you a status update of each of the areas. We've updated the Kentucky Board of Education each time that I have come here over the past 16 or 17 months. And essentially, we have, when we started, we had three different scoring or how we could identify each action. Either not started, which was red, developing, which was yellow, meaning we're still building this and making sure that it's happening at every school, or green, which is established. Established means a system's in place, personnel are trained, and we are confident that it is happening in each and every school in the district, and we are providing that oversight to make sure that's happening. As you can see now, at February 2020, we collaborating with the Kentucky Department of Education, and I will say this, Dr. Foster and her team have been incredible supports for us through the process. KDE really does. They are active and live in JCPS. We have regular visits where we share and collaborate together. So this work has been truly collaborative. It has not been where JCPS has been doing it alone and KDE has just been watching. So I really do believe, as we look... So I really do believe, as we look forward, when we finish this process, we will see a great model of state education working together with a local district to make major corrections and changes to a district. So I did want to identify Dr. Foster and all of her team for that work. But as you can see, we are at 89% now established, and just about every single one of these are almost to the 100%. Two that are, well, the major one I wanted to identify is IDEA. We still have work to do with ECE and IDEA, and it is by far the biggest lift that we have had of any of these because of the amount of ECE students we have in Jefferson County, which is 13,000 approximate ECE students, and ensuring compliance, which compliance in IDEA is much more challenging to make sure you are 100% accurate than maybe finance at the district level. So we still have work to do. We're confident we'll get there, but it has been significant change in JCPS. The other one that I'll talk about is the instructional management and planning, and I'll address that a little bit at the end. But once again, that is really around making sure that you have an instructional vision and systems at every single school, 155 schools. And that's not a small change, that's a major change. The way schools do teaching and learning is very difficult to change and move. It takes multiple years, I believe, to get to where you want to be when you are implementing systems. We are about one and a half years into implementing our systems and pillars, but we still have a ways to go, but we're confident we're on the right track. This also shows you, over the past several months, how we have developed in each and every one of these areas. And I will say, we have become a leader in the state in a couple of these areas. So our safe crisis management team has now become an award-winning, recognized team that trains other districts, and through things like the Continuous Improvement Summit, you will see our safe crisis management team leading, training, and receiving awards. So that, and in some other areas, we're very proud of the work that we've done. Not only have we changed, but we feel that we're becoming leaders in the work across the state, which is what we want to be. So first of all, in operations, today I want to talk about, operations was with everything from facilities being the major part of this, but also around transportation, many areas of transportation and training around transportation personnel. It goes to nutrition services. We had a 20 audit a couple of years back before our KDE audit came back with USDA and our nutrition services, and we had to make some major changes there. But it's really around facilities, transportation, and nutrition. The one I'll talk about most, which is the biggest one for us, is our facilities. It is well documented that we have an infrastructure and facilities problem, not just a small problem, but a major problem. We have 100, or excuse me, we have about 176 approximate buildings. Right now, 35 of them are well beyond end of life. And so what we have are failing HVAC systems, failing roofs that we have to replace, and quite honestly, when you look at our facilities, especially schools, it candidly embarrasses me at times that we have to send kids into some of our school buildings. Our most recent high school was built in 1968, Ballard High School, that's turning 52 years old this year. And we have a high school in West Louisville that has a third floor that has been condemned for the better part of a quarter of a century. And so the decision was made a quarter of a century ago that enrollment was declining, and the third floor at the academy at Shawnee needed significant work in the tune of about $6 million at that time, and instead of fixing it, it was just closed off. And it's been that way since I taught there in 1997. And so that's a major problem. But we also look to districts around us and realize that we have fallen behind. Since 2000, I believe, we have built two schools. Fayette County, which is two and a half times smaller than us since 2008, has built or is planning to build 10 schools in 12 years. So not only do we need to build new schools, but we must significantly renovate and repurpose our current schools for many reasons, for instruction, for safety, to have innovative instruction throughout our schools. And we can challenge people all the time. Drive around schools in Oldham County or drive around schools just on the outside in Fayette County, and then come to Jefferson County and drive around the schools, and you will see, without even stepping foot inside of the school, our facilities issues. The audit identified that we had not explored any additional revenue sources like most major districts have, most districts in this state have. Jefferson County has not, but we are going to have to be bold in our decision-making and the steps that we take in order to change the facilities in JCPS, and we were on that path. I was proud that our Board of Education, last March, passed the building of four brand-new schools. So we will be breaking ground on those schools in the next few months. That's four schools, but that's not even close to what we have to do in order to get to where we need to be. And even more troubling is if you go to our communities that have the highest need, highest poverty, and highest minority population is where we find the schools that are in most need. Yes, sir?
Could I ask you, do, what would it require in whether your system has done the nickel tax? Would it require the entire Jefferson County school system to vote on the nickel tax in order to get the nickel tax? Or have you already done it, or do you do it per school system?
So by state statute, a nickel tax can be passed by the Board of Education, which is an additional five cents per $100 of assessed value, which must go to capital projects, which Fayette County passed one 18 months ago, and you see what they've done with their facilities, which is build many new schools. Once the board passes it, there's a 45-day period that any opposition must collect signatures for Jefferson, based on the last presidential election, so it would be in the neighborhood of 35,000 signatures. If those are collected and we pass that, it would go on the November 2020, next November's election as a referendum.
Okay.
We, I need to, that is a wonderful question, but I also need to caution the board members that we may be in a position of having to take actions on future developments that come to us with regard to this thing. So we need to be very cautious about and almost treat this as if it were just an agenda item to get us completely informed.
Okay. So we are working-
That was a great one.
So as you can see, we're working on right now, developing, and I'll tell you what, I'll go fast forward a little bit, and we've just put together a few pictures. I am proud to say that we are correcting the 25- to 30-year error of not fixing Shawnee. So right now, we have accepted a bid, actually will be accepted at our next board meeting for a cost of approximately $42 million to fix the third floor at Shawnee and renovate the entire school. But I mean, these are some of the pictures that you see in schools in JCPS, just a few. I could add many more to this and go through that and talk about this for hours. And then you see brand-new schools, renovated schools across this state, and you just see a different picture of learning. And I want to reiterate, I do not believe that a facility alone creates effective learning. It's what happens inside the school and the classroom. So kids can learn in facilities that are not top-notch. They can learn, or they might not have effective learning inside of great facilities. However, I do know this, it speaks, when you have great facilities, it is the community saying to their students how important learning is, and there is no doubt, there is strong research to support the type of facilities that do support and improve student achievement and learning. So Jefferson County, we are going to go down this path, and we will make some decisions, hopefully with the support of our community, in order to change our facilities permanently. We are surviving right now with it. I'm really concerned in 10 years that our infrastructure will not be sustainable, and we will have major issues. We've kind of kicked the can down the road for a long time. We're going to make, but now's the time to make these changes. A couple of other things, we have trained over 1,200 bus drivers and support staff, targeted strategies, especially around behavior. We still work with that. That's on buses and transportation. We work with our transportation department and the corrective action plan on things like unloading, loading at schools, and what schools need to do to support transportation, and really looking at our transportation systems to see if we can make improvement. And then really, as you could see, 751 site visits around nutrition services. We are working now, as a part of this action, to centralize our nutrition services, where principals will not be the ones that will be evaluating nutrition workers. Principals should be focusing on instruction, and we will have central office personnel in nutrition services that will be doing that evaluative work. So that's around operations. Our second major area is IDEA, and I can't stress enough that the change that we are making and how difficult and challenging it is around IDEA. Right now, we have three corrective action plans, both with KDE and with IDEA at the federal level, and it is around compliance, full compliance at every school site, making sure we have the correct specialized classrooms for students, and disproportionality and discipline. And that has put us in these corrective action plans and is making us take really major steps to improve the work around IDEA. And it's been tough, and it continues to be tough work, to change how we do this. And so when we get audited, they come in and look at folders of our ECE students, and there are 77 items that must be correct in every single student folder in order to be in compliance. And if one of those areas is not correct in the folder, it's considered to be out of compliance. So having 13,000 students is a challenge, but we believe we're working on it. KDE has worked extremely close with us in this work and been very supportive. We have added what we call an implementation coach at every single school, where the implementation coach is really the person at the school that is in charge with ARC meetings and ECE compliance. And to the question earlier, Coach Johnson, as before, counselors were doing most of the ECE work in ARC, and they did not have the opportunity to truly counsel students for supports, whether that be trauma or to get to college. Now we've added an implementation coach at every single school who oversees our work with ECE, and now our counselors can actually counsel students. And so we've seen a big difference there in that aspect, but also ECE compliance. We've had hours and hours and days of professional development with school leadership, and then, as I said, regular records review when it comes to special education. So we've made major progress, but I would, I'd have to say, we still have work to do in this area before we can say we are where we need to be on it. Some of the summary of evidence that we have here, as you can see, I won't read this to you, 940 records review, August through December, 130 implementation coaches have been hired, and you can see the work that we've done, the trainings there, I won't read those off to you, but significant amounts of training. And finally, as I finish up, I just did want to say, when I talk about instruction and having an instructional vision, there's two parts of this that are so important to us. First of all, defining what is important in our district, what we want to see in every single school, and every, and our pillars are really around every single school and district office. And then the instructional systems that we need to see in every single school in building these out. And it's a challenge. It has really made us have every single school leader look at what they do, possibly stop what they're doing, and customize what we think are pillars and systems. So our three pillars are really around a backpack of success skills, making sure every student has the success skills that they need in order to transition to the next level. Very proud of that work. I think it's groundbreaking. Each and every year, we have 100,000 students collecting evidence of their learning. That is the future of education, and I think we are on the forefront of that. So students are collecting authentic evidence of their learning while still tracking their proficiency in math and reading using map testing. We have every fifth, eighth, and 12th grader stand up and do a public defense of their readiness to go to the next level. 20,000 every single year stand in front of a panel and do their defenses. So I do believe it is what we will see education become, and really students accepted to post a secondary in a few short years. So I'm excited about that work. Racial equity, we are willing to acknowledge the achievement gap that we have, the disproportionality that we have. The staff and hiring is not where we want it to be to reflect our district, and taking steps to eliminate those disproportionate data and that achievement gap. And then finally, improving culture and climate in every single school and our district offices. So it's big, tough work. And then around the instructional systems, I won't dig into those for you, but essentially, these are research-based, the six things that should happen at every single school in every single classroom to make sure that children are successful. From System One, which is a standards-based implementation, grade-level standards, to System Three, professional learning communities, planning for student success, System Five, which is providing students academic and behavioral supports, and System Six, providing coaching and feedback to teachers. And so all schools doing these same six systems, but creating it to fit their specific culture. So we've come a long way, but we have many steps to take to get this to where we need to be. And so I know that's a lot, stop and take a breath, but I appreciate the opportunity to share the work we're doing with JCPS and look forward to our continued partnership. I'll take any questions or comments that you have at this time.
Again, I am trying to caution our members that since we may have to make decisions about future reports, we need to be very cautious about questions. If it's, I don't want to ever stop people from asking things, but let's just thank you, Dr. Polio, for coming here. We appreciate it. And let us now take a 10-minute break. We will return exactly at 10 minutes till.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
We'll call the meeting back to order.
What question, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Do we have, is there anybody auditing what's happening in federal court from the board?
What I, what I did hear, will you want to answer that?
Sure.
This is Todd. Todd will answer.
My office was made aware of that yesterday, really just via the media. We haven't received any formal service on behalf of the board members of any scheduled hearing that's before the court, but my office is looking into it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
The newspaper did say they were had some, something was happening at nine, might happen at nine this morning, but here we are still, so apparently it hadn't happened yet. So we're just going to keep right on it. Keep on keeping on. Next item on the agenda is the Kentucky Department of Education Performance Management Update. KDE Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd will do this presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen.
Okay, so I introduced myself back in January and told you about our strategic plan. So I just want to put everything in context for you today before we actually dive into the results. And if you watched the board meeting back in December, this is going to be a repeat of the results that were shared out at that time. So the purpose of this is the year-end review for all of you, so that you know a starting point for where you're coming in. But again, I want to put things into context for you. The board and the department currently share a vision, which is perfectly acceptable. We do have different missions. There is more of a policy aspect to the board's mission, and for the department, it's very mission-driven around operations and helping students. And then we have a strategic plan for the department. So this is the plan that the department works off of. There are other states where boards have their own strategic plan. That's something that you all could decide to do at some point, but that would be different from the plan of the department. My responsibility is to share with the commissioner and with all of you the performance that is, the progress that we're making toward our goals that are in our plan. I also want to be clear, I'm going to be sharing out some student outcomes towards the end of this report, and that is very different from accountability. So Rhonda and her team are going to be up here after me, sharing the results of the accountability that was also shared, I believe, in December or maybe October. This is different. So our goals are not the same as what you would see in the accountability model. So I just want to point that out as I move forward. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Our plan, and I actually also want to say that- Our plan, and I actually also want to say that I've been in this position for nine years and I think I'm most proud of this plan. It is a, a good cross-section, what we call a balanced scorecard. So we've had plans in the past that have strictly focused on student outcomes. We've had plans more recently that strictly focus on internal operations. This is a balanced scorecard that focuses on all of those aspects. So as we go through and look at the results as of, so far, you're going to see results from all of those areas. So I'm going to start today with the strategic partnership. We have three priority areas: student success, strategic partnerships, and operational excellence. So what you see on this screen are three of the measures for strategic partnerships. The first two are straight from our partner, I'm sorry, the first one, Partner Satisfaction is a survey that went out to strategic partners. And KDE leadership identified 106 partners that they consider to be the most strategic. Of those 106 partners, those who responded gave a satisfaction rate of 90.7. KDE set a goal of 90% satisfaction with our partners. So it is in gray because that is a baseline, okay? As we set the goals and move toward them, the colors that you'll see in the bars after that will be yellow, red, or green, depending on the progress that's being made. So here, we only have a baseline that was set in February of last year. Moving on to partnership effectiveness, each of our partners has a liaison within KDE. And we wanted to get our liaison's perspective of that partnership. So this is what we're calling partnership engagement. Here again, this was the first time that we did this. This was in September of 2019. We set a goal of 80% and our baseline has us at 87.2% for partnership effectiveness. And then finally, we have district financial audit findings. This measure actually could be put in any one of the three priority areas. We put it here because it is a partnership between us and the districts. This is where Robin Kenny's office is working with those district financial officers. They do the training for those folks for financial purposes. And then they do the audits that report out what audit findings have been made in that area. So they set a goal of reducing audit findings 2% per year. Again, all we had was a baseline. They started collecting it a little differently and measuring it a little differently in 2018. So we have one year of data. Since then, it did decrease 4% that very first time. So we're on a good, good road there. Now I'm going to move on to operational excellence. This is primarily coming from two different surveys. First, I'm going to talk about the customer survey. So on the top line to the left, customer satisfaction. This is an overall rating of the overall survey that went out. Now, these surveys were sent to superintendents and superintendents were asked to share it with their central staff, central office staff, and principals within their district. You can see that the very first year that we did this was November of 2018. We only had 493 respondents at that time. And in April of 2019, we did it for a second time with 760 respondents. Obviously, if you look across this whole screen, you'll see that this is our lowest rating when it comes to operational excellence. So customer service is an area where we definitely need a focus. We're currently at 51% with a goal of 60% by 2023. From that same survey, we get to the far right at the top line, external communication. So this is one component out of that same survey where we're pulling the questions that were around communication. Pretty similar, started at 47%, we moved up to 51.4% and we also have a goal of 60% for that one. Now, three of these are from our internal employee survey. We had three domains within that survey. They were around communication, leadership, and skills and expertise. So the top middle is the internal communications. We did this twice before we got together and came up with a goal for this particular measure. You can see that we started at 73.5%. Our goal for 2023 is 85% and we're currently at 79.5. So we are making progress in that area. For leadership effectiveness, we started at 70% with a goal of 80 by 2023 and we're at 79%. So again, we are on track there. And finally, for employee skills and expertise, we started at 84.5 with a goal of 90%. And this is where employees are rating their own skills as well as the skills of others within the department. Do we have the right people in the right seats? Are you getting the training that you need? Things like that. Do you have access to equipment that you need? So right now, we're at 89.5 with a goal of 90%. Last one on this page is strategic management maturity. If you're familiar with any continuous improvement models, that's what this is based on. So it goes from a Level 1 to a Level 5. We are currently at 3.1. We started at 2.6 in September of 2018. What those levels mean, so starting at a Level 2 would mean that we are in reactive mode, okay? Moving up to a Level 3 puts us in structured and proactive. Level 4 would be managed and focused. That's where we are hoping to get within the five-year span of this plan. And ultimately, Level 5 is continuous improvement. Lots of organizations go on what we call this journey of continuous improvement. Very few reach a Level 5 or even a 4 for that matter. These are changes that, that take years to get to, to move from one level to another. But this is what we're working on. And finally, student success. I wanted to share with you, first of all, our, the way that we're measuring these goals, how we set these goals. And this is a formula that we have been using since 2011 or 12, the time when Dr. Terry Holliday was here, is when we started using this model. So using transition readiness as an example, that particular measure started off with 64.8% of students being transition-ready. We take, the goal of, the way that these goals are set is to reduce the deficit by half. So if you have 64.8, subtract that from 100, the deficit then is 35.2. Cut that deficit in half, that gives you 17.6. Add that back to your baseline of 64.8 and you have a goal of 82.4. Now, all of our student, student outcome goals for our plan have been set for the 2030 school year. So you can see that that 82.4, at the very bottom there, I have a timeline for you, that's the 2030 goal, 82.4. This plan goes through 2023. So we look at the 2023 column. Our goal for this plan is to get to 71.2% of students transition-ready. Okay? So that's how these are set. So now looking at proficiency. The way that we did this, we are looking, again, this is for KPREP. KPREP is the tool that we're looking at, which is the same as what they use for accountability if they're looking at proficiency. We wanted to look at the area, the grades that are considered transition grades. So KPREP starts in 3rd grade. So you'll see results here for 3rd grade reading and 3rd grade math to the far left. 5th grade is a transitional year, getting ready to go into middle school. So we are also looking at that. And then 8th grade, moving from middle school into high school, which is also the last year of the KPREP. So as you can see, this is an area of concern. Proficiency has not made a lot of progress. The one area where we have made some progress would be 8th grade reading. It has gone up a bit. 5th grade math, we had a little bit of success. These numbers do go all the way back to 2012. So we do have trend data all the way up, or since then. That's why that one is in green, even though it looks like we were just baselining. It was an improvement from the 2017 year. Overall, you can see that reading is doing better than math, but we've really been pretty flat for, for quite a long time. Moving on to the gap, this is the achievement gap. And the way that we decided to measure this is looking at students who are on free and reduced lunch compared to those students who are not on free and reduced lunch. And here, you want to see a downward trend because we want to reduce that gap. Again, you're seeing, and it's the same, same measure, we're looking at KPREP scores for those two groups and we're looking to decrease. So again, red means that we have not been meeting our targets, we're not on track to meet those targets. You'll see one yellow up there in reading for 3rd grade. We were within .1 of achieving that and it, we are heading in the right direction. So we gave that one a yellow. It did not meet the goal, but it is headed in the right direction. Again, reading, we do see that we are making some progress, both in grades 5 and grade 8. Those continue to go down, but if you look at those numbers, they're, it's very, very, very minute. And in math, we have not seen any gap closure over the last couple of years. Finally is the one that I started off with as an example. We don't have any trend data on this one yet because it was just set in December, or, I'm sorry, October. So all we have right now is the baseline, but you do see where we're trying to get to by 2030. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Does any member have a question? Aaron?
Karen, I appreciate it. And obviously, you know, I'm going to talk about the gap. I can't help it. You know, this is where I'm going. And I see low income hasn't made a lot of improvement, but I know the measurement of underrepresented, underrepresented minorities is not on here. And I looked at the data, it's not pretty.
And I, I don't want to speak for Rhonda, but I'm pretty sure they're going to be sharing that information with you. This is just what's in our strategic plan. We do, obviously, we have those numbers, they're out on the school report card, and yes, they're, they're even worse.
So my question is a simple one. I'm sorry, I should know this and I don't. Why wasn't that gap measure included in the strategic plan?
That was a decision by, by Dr. Lewis to, we wanted, we didn't want too many measures within the plan. We already have, this is, this is a lot for a strategic plan, what we have already. We, we went back and forth. And actually, the first directive he gave me was to go white versus black. And so we started working on that. And then he, he changed his mind after some conversations and we went with free and reduced lunch versus non.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, Karen. How were the targets set for the student success measures under GAAP?
The same way, using the same formula.
Same, divided by half?
Yeah, just going backwards, yeah.
Seeing no other questions, thank you, Chief Performance Officer.
I like that.
Would it be, what about like Chief Enforcement Officer?
That's your title.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the 2018, 2019 Assessment and Accountability Results Update. Kentucky Department of Education Associate Commissioner Rhonda Sims and Division Director Jennifer Stafford will present a review and subsequent discussion on the assessment and accountability results. And somebody else.
And the other guy.
And somebody else.
Kevin Hill. Kevin is the other director. We have him on the slide here. Pleasure to be with you. And I'll mention to you, I grew up in Casey County, Kentucky. I'm very proud of that. And we have about 25 pounds of potatoes, but we have about a five-pound bag to put them in. So we're going to, we're going to, we've shared some things with you that will be for background for you. We also can dive deeper into anything you have particular interest in. So what we're going to do in this kind of brief time together is just give you kind of some high-level highlights of the last reported round of results for the assessment and accountability system. Now, this was the first year that we put a rating on schools. You've heard information being called a star rating. So it was the first year of using stars. We've had prior accountability systems that used other kinds of metrics and measures. But this, the year of 1819 data that we reported in the fall of 19 was the first year we actually put a star rating on schools for their overall performance. And we are going to focus on GAAP. I've heard Aaron's conversation today, we've been listening at the state board down the hall in our offices. And we are going to talk a bit about that. And there are a lot of places where we have concern in the data. And you know, that is why I think your role as, as leaders and directors of policy in the state becomes very important. Because what do we do to change the trajectory for individual kids and to change the trajectory of the data that you see? So we want to walk through that with you. But we have given you more than we're really going to highlight. And so we're going to have some things that are just strictly background for you in the PowerPoint. We're going to highlight some big ideas as we go along. Lots of information is out on the school report card website. We can certainly direct you to that. We have briefing packets, there's lots of information. So if you have interest in particular things, we're more than happy to pull that together for you, either in a communication to you separately, between board meetings, or to even come back and talk about something specific and do that deeper dive. So we're going to start with a little bit of looking at patterns, rather than looking at numbers, because we can get very caught up in individual numbers. I will tell you the system, and Jennifer's going to go through a high level, just what's in accountability, what are the pieces. Kentucky has used sort of a multi-process for many years, so that it's more than just sort of a single test score on a single test day. There are multiple factors that go into accountability. I will tell you, we've had a tremendous amount of change, beginning with the, and Jennifer, I think is going to talk about this in one more detail, but beginning with really the passage of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was the national redo of the Education Secondary, Elementary Secondary Education Act. That was in December of 15. We really began the process at that point to begin to talk about what should accountability be in Kentucky. And we have had sort of some general tweaks to the system from that point to today. And you know, obviously, every time we have a legislative session, every time regulations come open, there's the potential for more change coming forward. So what we want to show you first is a little look at reading and math at elementary and middle school. And this is a trend line. And I'll remind you that with this particular, what you're looking at, we're looking at a combination of proficient and distinguished performance. So Kentucky has four levels of student performance: novice, apprentice, proficient, distinguished. And the various pieces of accountability have different calculations that add the data up. But what I want you to kind of look for here is the order of performance by group of student, by disaggregated, this is disaggregated by student group. The student groups you're looking at right now are the federally required student groups. So the state of Kentucky must report on these groups. We do some additional reporting on male, female, migrant, we do several other groups. We do some gifted, talented reporting. And on some of our later slides, we're going to actually show you some of those data as well. But this is the federally required groups. You will see that this is multiple years of results, beginning back to 14. And you will see that the last few years are very flat. So they look pretty much like straight lines. You had a year in 16 where there was a little sort of tweak up, but really not a tremendous amount of change. Now, I think in addition to that, it's the pattern of group performance. Because we've talked a lot about the gap, the difference in groups of students and how they perform based on the student group that they have membership in. And that gap is not really closing. If it were closing, those lines would be getting closer together. And you can see the pattern that they're not very close together. You'll see that our highest performing group is Asian students in Kentucky. As we look at almost, as we're going to look at some of the different assessments here, you will also see that same pattern. White students are obviously the racial ethnicity category. All students is everyone, everyone put together. In several places federally, we have to use all students in information that we report. We also do two or more races in Kentucky. And then you'll see those that qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, Hispanic, African-American, disability students, those are students who have an IEP, an Individual Education Program, Plan, Individualized Education Plan, and English learners. Now, what I think you're going to see... Now, what I think you're going to see is not so much the numbers, the numbers are there for you, the percentages, but it's the difference between those lower-performing and higher-performing groups. And when we look at reading at elementary, or if we switch forward to look at math at elementary, the pattern of performance is the same. So what group is performing at the top? It's Asian. Our group that tends to be at the bottom of performance most of the time are English learners. Above them typically is students with disability. Again, for Kentucky, that's defined by the IEP, and above that is usually our African-American population. So this pattern might vary just slightly in the order. But if we pulled up ACT results for the state of Kentucky, you would see a very similar pattern. If we looked at NAEP results, you'd see a very similar pattern. It might tweak a little differently for a particular test at a particular grade, but it is getting to the issue I've heard Dr. Thompson bring up, I've heard others of you mention today, our Kentucky Teacher of the Year, making that a focus of her work. It gets to that issue of how do we begin to move instruction? We know what happens daily in that instructional classroom. How do we begin to move instruction to see a change in our outcome? Because we're looking here at outcome data, you know, after it's all said and done, and we've taken a consistent test across the state of Kentucky. And you know, the differences is quite glaring when you look at the very top performing group and the lowest performing group. And you can see a lot of distribution right there in the middle. But what we wanted to share with you today, it, it's not so critical, is it 40% or 50? Is it 50 or 60% that are proficient and distinguished? So I think it's interesting to kind of look at that and know that and see which subjects are doing a little bit better. It's the pattern we want you to look at and, and get a sense of that and what you see. So you had in front of you elementary reading and elementary math. Now Kentucky's been a state where we have multiple content areas that we assess. Federally, reading is required, math is required, and science is required. Kentucky assesses social studies, and we assess writing, but for most of those contents, you will see similar patterns of distribution by groups of students and percentages. So obviously, we'd like to see lines where there's a trajectory upward, and we would like to see lines where they're coming closer together, where we would see that gap being closed between groups of students. So if we look to middle school, you see overall a bit higher performance with reading, but at the same time, and you see a little bit more upper trend on the lines, but at the same time, you see that difference in group performance as well. And then at middle school mathematics, a little lower than reading, which is pretty typical for our history in Kentucky. But again, that very similar pattern by group. Our largest group in Kentucky, obviously, in terms of race and ethnicity, is white. All students, again, reflects everyone, but we also have an increasing number of English learners. That's a group that's grown over time. And many, many of our students fall into the free and reduced-priced meal qualification. It varies by the percentage by district, but that is, that's probably our largest in that, Kevin, overall group of students.
Of those groups, over half, yeah.
Yeah, over half in that category as well. So that's to kind of set the stage for what you're seeing with data as we can provide more information to you in more detail. Because we, again, we think it's very important that you look at trend, that you look over time. We think it's very important you look at pattern as well. And then I think the conversation becomes what through policy, what through instruction, what through programs can help us begin to change the trajectory of those lines and how students are doing. And we have lots of factors that go in to the overall reporting of school results. So Jennifer's going to lead us through a little bit, a high-level view of what is included in accountability. What we started with, though, was reading and math and the percent at those upper two levels. So we'll remind you of kind of what the data sources we're looking at.
Okay. I sense a question here from Patrice.
Yes, please.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Patrice.
Under the free and reduced meals, obviously, there's some duplication of some of the, the children in there. Do we have disaggregated data on that within that subcategory?
So that if, are you thinking if they only belong to one group? Is that what you're thinking about? Or with, if we looked at free and reduced lunch, could we say who is African-American?
Right, well, like the free and reduced meals, then do we have white, Asian?
We could do that. We could do that. That's a cross tabulation, and we actually have some of that information out online. So that could, we could pull that for you, because we could actually take one of these and then subdivide it down into that category. Also, just a quick reminder, you probably are aware in some of the other work that you've done and, and maybe some conversations, there are some programs where every student qualifies for free and reduced lunch in a district, where the whole district has free and reduced lunch as a, a part of the U.S. Agriculture Department program. Even though a school might participate that, we still collect the information, would you be eligible for free and reduced lunch regardless of that program? If that program were not in place? And that's what's leading to this reporting. It's still based on eligibility, since that is the poverty indicator factor for Kentucky. Good, good question.
Lee has a question.
Yes.
Do you break this data down for individual schools?
Yes, yes. Out on our website, all of the information is by school and by district. Now, we do have some suppression rules that come into play for public reporting. If you have a tiny school where if I were able to identify, here are the 11 students in this particular category, it would reveal a privacy issue for that student. So we do have some places where data is suppressed and has a little asterisk on the public card, but the individual school gets everything, because they see all of the data with, without any kind of layer of public protection on privacy of student information.
Where would you find that?
We can, it'd probably be easier if we link it, it's in the school report card, but we could also link you out. We also have data sets, so if you're a user of Excel, you can easily sort things, and probably our school-based people use those Excel files more than the, the, basically the other sorts of files. But we can, we can pull together some links, so you don't have to go with it.
One, one kind of broader question. Back in, before reform, you know, we thank God for Mississippi. Do we have something that shows what has happened since those days and where we stand now relative to some of those reforms?
Yes, I think, I think the best we can do is, Kevin's going to show you a couple date, slides for NAEP, and that NAEP data is the most comparable data across states. And Mississippi had a really great NAEP year with a lot of moving forward. So we've got a couple maps, I think, that'll help you see that in just a second.
Thank you.
Great. So Rhonda's mentioned the assessment system. So the performance of student performance on each of the different assessments you were just given a highlight of. Each of those subject area assessments then feed into the accountability system. So the school accountability system then uses each of those either federally required subject area tests or the state-required subject area assessments. So we use each of those, the performance of the students within the school to show how school performance is, and we bring those together into the school accountability system. Now, there are multiple indicators within that system. So at elementary school, there are three indicators, and at high school, there were four indicators. Now, because of difference in both federal legislation as well as state legislation, the accountability system over the past few years has fluctuated. So there have been multiple changes over the past few years due to those recent legislative changes. But for 2018-19, these indicators were used for school accountability. If we look at elementary and middle schools, there were three indicators that led us to the five-star rating, as well as identification of comprehensive school improvement, as well as additional targeted support and improvement schools. Now, we'll talk a little bit more at high level about each of those and how those were identified after we talk about the indicators. So if we start with elementary proficiency, proficiency is the indicator that the student performance in reading and math assessments. So reading and math is tested every year, grades three through eight, and their performance goes into that indicator. Rhonda mentioned the performances of student outcomes with novice, apprentice, proficient, and distinguished. Each of those student performance levels get different credit within the system for our school accountability. For proficiency, they get, or for novice, they get zero, for apprentice, they get .5, proficient, zero, and then distinguished, 1.25. So there's an increased number of credit for the school on how students perform within each of these subject area assessments. For our elementary schools, the second indicator is separate academic indicator. These are, again, both federally and state-required assessments. Science is a federal requirement, and social studies and writing is a state-required assessment. We use the student performance for the indicator of separate academic in each of those content areas with the different student performance across those assessments of novice, apprentice, proficient, and distinguished. So we bring together all of the student performance and calculate an indicator for each of those. For growth, growth has had a bit of changes over the last few years. We started two years ago with growth being in one direction, then we had a bit of feedback from our field, wanting it to be more of a categorical growth. So in 1819, we used what's called a categorical growth, and those categories of novice, apprentice, proficient, and distinguished. Novice and apprentice were subdivided into novice-low and novice-high, apprentice-low and apprentice-high. So the, if the student grew from the year before to the current year in those categories, then they, they received credit in the system on an increasing amount. So if a student went from novice-low to novice-high, which is a tremendous amount of work on the student, the parent, and the teacher in the classroom, they got credit. If they jumped from novice-low to proficient, they got more credit for the school. So again, trying to, to give credit for the school and the hard work that they're putting into those, the students. So the categorical growth was used in, for reading and math only for the growth at elementary school. It was also, in growth, was progress for our English learners on English learner, English language attainment. So similar to the categorical growth from, in each of those categories, if a student was in a lower range of English language proficiency on the access test and grew, they got credit within the system. So for growth, it was not only growth in reading and math, but it was also growth for our English learners on English learner attainment, or English language attainment. For high schools, there were four indicators: proficiency, separate academic, graduation indicator, as well as transition readiness. For high school proficiency, we are transitioning from an end-of-course model to a summative assessment model. So that's taken a couple of years to develop those, those standards, develop the items, and then field-test those items. So during that transition from the end-of-course to the summative assessments, we use the ACT reading and math to fulfill that requirement for proficiency. So last year, the 2018-19 year, was the last year we'll use ACT for that requirement. For this year, the 1920 school year, we do have a summative assessment that will be utilized in proficiency at the high school. So we'll transition to that summative assessment at high school for this year. The separate academic, we used, again, the state-required science and writing in the test that was developed based on our academic standards. For graduation indicator, we do use the four- and five-year rates. For the indicator, we combine those, but the four-year rate is specifically used for the identification of CSI, if it is below the 80%. So the four-year is utilized within the system, but for the indicator, we combine both the four and the five-year, because that's a good bit of, of effort then that we put into the fifth year. The transition readiness has a multitude of assessments that can be utilized to demonstrate that the student is ready for the college and career. It's both college and, as well as career demonstrations. You have ACT, college placement exams, dual-credit, advanced placement exams, international baccalaureate, industry certificates, as well as college CTE end-ofplacement exams that are tied to articulated credit. Also coming into place last year was apprenticeships as well as exceptional work experience. Now, each of these indicators are, are calculated, so there's a score at each indicator. So each of those indicators, we present to the school a score for each of those. So that score then leads us to an overall score. So the overall score was what the five-star rating was based on, as well as the identification of CSI and ATSI. So these are the weights that the former board approved in, to use and base that overall calculation on. Now, there is a phrase within our accountability regulation that says that if any piece of the, the accountability model is missing, that the weight be redistributed proportionally. So we did not have the Quality of School Climate and Safety Survey last year in 1819, so that 4% was redistributed proportionally to the other indicators of the system. And these were the weights that were utilized to create that overall score, and then based on, based the five-star rating on. So as far as the reporting, we did have the five-star, one to five stars. We had that overall accountability score. We also, for each of the indicators, had a group of stakeholders that came together to label the score on each of the indicator. Because if we just said you got a score of 77 in proficiency, you wouldn't really understand if that was good or bad. So our stakeholders came together and set standards on each of the indicators and labeled them from very low to very high. So we had that reporting, and that was very informational, and it is in the school report card. We also had the federal classifications for our schools. Now, I mentioned that stakeholders came together, and it was a very transparent process. It was facilitated by national experts, Brian Gahn and Chris Domolesky from the Center of Assessment, brought together a group of stakeholders from across the state to set the standards. Now, two different approaches could have been taken. One was to have a normalized distribution of our star rating, which would mean that, you know, there could be some arbitrary number set that 10% got five stars, or 10% got one stars, and the rest were just redistributed. That was not the way, the direction of the, the group. It was, it was heavily debated while we were there, but in the end, the majority wanted what was called a criterion reference, a criterion set approach to setting the five-star, meaning that the group of stakeholders developed some performance criteria that they wanted to see, and use that performance criteria, that narrative of what a five-star school had to meet in those different indicators. So using that, those narratives and those performance-level descriptors, then they set the one to five stars. And you can see here on Slide 15 that the overall ratings for each of our levels of elementary, middle, and high, and the number and percentage of schools. Now, it does seem like it is a normalized distribution, but the criteria was used based on those performance-level descriptors that the, the stakeholders put together. These were, have been updated since October, because we have had a data cleanup after public release, as well as rescores and allegations that have public release, as well as rescores and allegations that have been applied. So these numbers and percentages have been updated, as well as our number of schools for additional targeted support and improvement. For our comprehensive support and improvement, this is a federal definition of the lowest five percent of schools by level. So we'll always have about fifty schools because the number of schools across the state really doesn't change a whole lot. So five percent of schools by level will always be around fifty schools to be identified for comprehensive support and improvement. Now, for additional targeted support and improvement, those were the schools that had previously been identified for targeted support and improvement the year before and failed to exit. So those schools remained in ATSI if they did not show improvement in any of the areas that they were identified for. So that is a lot of detail. The other slides on CSI and turnaround ATSI is really for your information. And again, that high level of information that we wanted to provide you a little bit more.
We wanted to point out two other areas so you can again look at that pattern of student performance disaggregated. We did, as Jennifer described, have a growth indicator, looks at prior year to current year, looks at reading and math. This is reading and math combined. It's the overall indicator score. Again, you see some good movement up with our English learners that are in what's called monitored status. That means they've actually exited and attained English, but they're being monitored for two additional years. That's a federal, it's allowable federally to do that. So what it says to us is as our students attain English, they're doing quite well with the regular curriculum. And so you see some growth there with that. Again, you see that growth, I think, is an important other snapshot, as well as just status or how you're doing on proficiency or the content area of reading and math, because it shows, are we moving up from the previous year? And you can see that a lot of our groups of students are moving up. And so you see a pretty, again, Asian and Hispanic a little bit higher, and that English learners modified. We also gave you some slides on what it is for reading and what it is for math. That combined slide put reading and math together. Want to also point out, because we have Dr. Thompson here, and we've been talking a lot about that importance of moving from grade twelve out into the regular world, whether it be further post-secondary experiences or in the world of work. And so transition readiness is the way we measure that and put it into an accountability system. And I think here is something where we do want to look very much at our student group performance. You can see that the transition readiness, again, it combines lots of factors. There's a lot, there's sort of a menu of how students can demonstrate they're ready for the next step. Jennifer went through that list on the accountability slide that listed all the information. But you also can see that we have some groups that are, again, have very much a gap from our highest performing groups. You can see our English learners, as we get to that final step, are not necessarily demonstrating the readiness for the next step, even though they're showing some improvement in like reading and math performance, that indicator score of twenty-five point three. You also see African-American at thirty-eight point nine. And then you see white students at seventy-three. So again, lots of ways that students can demonstrate readiness, but many of those ways are fairly new. And so schools, high schools, are getting their hands around all of how to provide these multiple opportunities for students. But I think that becomes a really important point to think about as we talk about that next step as moving forward. One other thing we wanted to show you disaggregated is graduation rate. Kentucky has historically a high graduation rate. We do both a four-year and a five-year, as Jennifer mentioned, because some kids just need longer to matriculate through, and we need to recognize that. Most federal laws, though, require us to use the four-year in much of the federal reporting. But here you can see our rates for our students, and you can see we continue to need to do some work with our students with disabilities to help them attain graduation. So it gives you kind of two different pictures. You know, graduating is about, graduation is about completing the expectation of high school. Transition is about demonstrating you're kind of ready for a next step. And while they're related factors, they're not the same thing, and they're not measuring the same thing, and you see the difference in data. Now, to go back to Dr. Cod's question about how are we doing compared to other states, Kevin's going to walk us through a couple of NAEP slides as we close out with you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Uh huh. Yes. Dr. Johnson.
How do you reconcile the lower performance in some categories, but the high school graduation rate is really high? I mean, there's a disconnect there somewhere.
Right. Right. And again, it's kind, it does, it is looking at some slightly different measures. You know, with graduation, it's completing credits, it's getting through whatever program that high school has in place. When we look at transition, you're looking at outside measures such as the ACT, advanced placement. And so I think that's where you're seeing the difference in performance. I think the challenge then becomes, how do we not only help our kids be successful and complete graduation and walk across that stage, celebrate with families, but how do we make sure they also have the skill set that's a little higher in some cases that they need to do well on an ACT, an SAT, an AP class, an international baccalaureate? Those are sort of outside validated measures. We have a whole variety of things on the career side, too, that David Horstman's group leads. So there has been a lot of discussion over the years of that kind of disconnect between a higher graduation rate, but we're saying you're ready to graduate, but you're not quite as ready for the next step. Transitions are more about demonstrating ready for next step. So it is looking at different numbers and a different sort of look. So I do think we want to, ultimately, you want to get the percentages where they're much more equalized. But I think that's about giving kids opportunities and programs at the high school level, those higher level.
Kevin?
Sure. As we look at NAEP, I think at your last special meeting in January, there was questions about NAEP, and we provided some detail there. So this is just a high-level look at how we stand against other states on NAEP, which is the National Assessment of Action Progress. It's the only comparable assessment across all states. So this gives you a picture of our ranking. If we started fourth grade math, you see we're thirty-fourth or thirty-first. Our scale score, we've been consistent, kind of flat, basically. But you see there are nine states jurisdictions scoring significantly below Kentucky. So you see those darker shaded colors are the states significantly scoring below us. We're in that gray with twenty-seven other states, so we're around the national average in fourth grade math. And this, that pattern's similar across all the assessments they give NAEP at fourth grade reading and math. So as we go forward to eighth grade, let's look at eighth grade math. One thing you'll see in eighth grade math is that we do trail, we are significantly below the nation. This is the one area we are below the national average on NAEP. So and we see we ranked thirty-seven. So this is our lowest performing area in eighth grade math. So as we look at reading, reading traditionally, we've performed well in reading compared to other states in the nation. Even in two thousand seventeen, we were statistically above the nation. This past year, in two thousand nineteen, we actually dropped slightly, and we're around that national average now compared to where we were. So we had a little concern in fourth grade reading, which did drop this year. Eighth grade reading kind of held its own. We're statistically similar, even though we did have a scale score drop, and we're in that middle range scoring with the national average. So that's a high-level picture of how we stack up compared to other states at a real high level.
And so for many years, to go back to your original question, Dr. Cod, for many years, Kentucky was quite a bit lower than the national average in NAEP. And then over time, especially with the influx of support and money in the early nineties, we began to really kind of creep up. And now we're pretty firmly in the middle of the pack. But obviously, we want to be above that middle of the pack.
You don't hear.
Lee, and then Sharon.
You don't hear much about that, though, and the fact that we were so low, and then there was an action taken where there was money put in, and then we moved. So guess what? It's pretty obvious that there's a reason for that. Now we got to move further, and therefore, it's, you know, you're competing against people who are already up there, and it's going to take another piece. But I think there should be a lot of discussion about the fact that we made some major steps from where we used to be.
That's right.
And there, but there are specific reasons why we made those steps, and we need to get back to that. And I think this administration is looking at education in a way that we need to move. And you hear a lot about continuous improvement. It looks like in Kentucky, we just want to get to mediocre unless that's fine. You know, we're average now, hot dog. But we don't say, you know, let's keep moving and let's continue. That's why I'm looking at, want to look at the individual schools.
Sure.
Because you look at math, and is there someplace that's an outlier, that's really doing something right?
Right.
And why don't we do more of that rather than try to invent something new and different to try, when we know that there's some things that are making us move in a positive direction? Is it the teacher? Is it the program? Is it some training? Or what is it that makes those schools well above these numbers in particular categories? And then look at continuous improvement, say, let's do, let's do some of that.
Okay. We can certainly look a little deeper in the data analysis.
Sharon.
Well, I think I want to continue that line of thinking in terms of just kind of reflecting on, I'm sorry to say, this is no surprise, so what are we doing differently?
That's right.
And I just, I think that there's some urgency to that question because our future workforce can't survive on the performance of Asians and whites, and, I mean, it just can't.
That's true.
The economy of the state will not, will crumble if we don't have contributors coming from these groups that are historically underperforming. And so I just, you know, I'm just raising a sense of urgency and a little bit of, kind of like, if we can't say what we're doing different, we're not saying enough. And we certainly aren't doing enough.
Sure.
Aaron.
The worst thing about being a social statistician is you understand the data, and the worst thing about being it, you understand the data. A couple of things I'd point out that, Rhonda, by the way, I appreciate y'all bringing this disaggregation at this level.
Sure.
I think the board needs to pay really some attention to this. Rhonda also told us, look at patterns, trends. If you look at whether it's an outside validation source or an inside validation source, it's showing us that we have trends over two thousand fourteen till now, we haven't changed. And Lee, I would agree, partially, it's the dollars that we've infused it in. There's some areas that we can look at, and I'll just warn us, I'm for low income, free and reduced lunch, but we have so, that's a large N.
Sure.
And that can really mask what we need to do to think strategically. And it is about continuous improvement. I mean, if we have a trend over five years that hasn't moved, or six years, we have to look at where those inputs are to make certain things happen.
That's right.
So I think our data, assessment for assessment itself doesn't get as far.
That's right.
Assessment for continuous improvement is powerful.
That's right.
So the way the data are brought to us is powerful. And I would ask us as a policy body, even though I'm an ex officio non-voting member, is to challenge ourselves to think about that and not just make the statement about how important it is to not leave people behind. Because we have for a long time, and graduation rates really just doesn't tell us a whole lot, I'm afraid. Transition ready in many cases really do, and what we do after we get there. And we have a lot of inputs that we can look at, whether it's what's happening. Poverty in Clay County, where I'm from, may look just a little bit different of poverty in inner-city Louisville, even though it's poverty. I'm not arguing the difference there. So I would ask us to really think about this triangulation of trends, as well as how we disaggregate, look at the inputs that would have some other items we need to take a look at culturally, socially, emotionally, as well as the power of the teachers that this Teacher of the Year was talking about. So thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Please.
I was following what Sharon said about urgency. It's, you know, there's a time when Kentucky looked like we were doing okay because we sold our cheap land and cheap labor to people to come in here and give us jobs to put stuff together that they took major profits from. Then we realized that cheap labor wasn't competitive enough to put the jobs inside Toyota, when they had three thousand people apply and only hired, you know, a few hundred of those, because the economy's changed quite a bit. And now you're at the point where many companies aren't moving around, and you have to create your own stuff. And that's where these grades have become very important. Everybody's going to have to have some knowledge of where this economy is taking us, and it's eating up jobs like crazy that we've traditionally had at this state. And pretty soon, truck drivers and cab drivers and people are going to be out of business, too. But if we stay flat for four or five years, we're losing ground because there are other people that are moving. And so urgency, I think, is pretty important.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is recognition of Kentucky Department of Education employees, interim commissioner Kevin Seabrow. And while you're, while you're getting ready, as soon as we're done with this, I think we're going to have a group photo. Do we know where we're going to go for the group photo?
In the lobby, down in the lobby.
All the way to the, and then, so, so when this is over, we'll go down, everybody go down to the lobby, then we're going to come back up for lunch, and then we'll reconvene. All right.
Just look for me in the lobby.
Look for me in the lobby. Tony in the lobby. Kevin?
Yes, thank you. I'm pleased to present the KDE's Making a Difference Award this morning. I have with me Toya Roby, the KSD principal. I'd also like the lieutenant governor to come up to help present these awards. I want to briefly describe why we are making this award, giving this award today. All schools across the state are charged with keeping students safe. Same is true for our own two state schools, Kentucky School for the Blind in Louisville and Kentucky School for the Deaf in Danville. However, these schools are the most unique in the state in that they are the only two residential schools that serve students twenty-four hours a day for six days a week. It takes the coordination of staff across three different shifts to serve the needs of these students. All staff must be attuned to not only meeting the educational needs of these children, but also serve in the role as parents across the evening. This means helping them to do homework, asking about their day, brushing teeth, and reading bedtime stories. It also means knowing each child's individual habits, likes, dislikes, and paying attention to the little things that any parent would know about their child. Recently, at KSD, a staff member noticed her student's behavior was out of the norm. After a call to the parent, red flags were quickly raised. The dorm parent immediately notified her supervisors, and thanks to their rapid response, the child was taken to the emergency room, where the child was airlifted to a hospital. The student is alive and well today thanks to the vigilant actions of both Jennifer Sanders, dorm parent, and her supervisor, Doug Brewer. It is my great pleasure at this time to present the Making a Difference Award to both Jennifer and Doug. It is this kind of commitment and dedication that we look for and hugely rely on to meet the needs of our students at both of these important schools. Could you both please come forward? The next award is actually a redo of an award. This is the Nolan Miller Award. This award was presented at December's board meeting by Dr. Lewis. Unfortunately, the recipient was unable to attend unexpectedly due to an illness, and however, Dr. Lewis and the board went forward and presented the award. However, we actually want to re-present the award today to have, to be able to embarrass him and since he was out. And I think he also has some family members present today. Okay. But I actually want, and for the benefit of the new board, to read again, and Dr. Lewis did this as well, but it's important to be reminded of why this. did this as well, but it's important to be reminded of why this award exists. So I'm going to read about the award, and then we'll talk about the recipient. The Kevin M. Nolan Award was established in 2009 to recognize Nolan's 18 years of service. In 2017, the Kentucky Board of Education added Mary Ann Miller's name to the award to honor her many years of service to the Kentucky Department of Education. Nolan, who was unable to be with us today, but sends his respects, retired from the department in 2008 after beginning a career with the department in 1991. Kevin dedicated his professional career to public service and support of education and was one defined by integrity, compassion, leadership, and scholarship. Mary Ann Miller, who was planning to be here today, however, she unfortunately has to be with a family member at a doctor appointment this morning that was unexpected. She also sends her best wishes. Ms. Miller retired from the position of Chief of Staff in 2017 with approximately 31 years of service to the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Prior to that, she was a former special ed teacher. During her tenure at KDE, she committed to making Kentucky's public schools better with the goal of every child becoming college and career-ready. Ms. Miller also is a 2013 recipient of the award, previously known as the Kevin N. Nolan Award. I obviously know both of these individuals personally, and I still walk, try to walk around in those big shoes that they left to feel, and I know most people at the department feel the same way. So this award is something that's very special to me. Both Kevin Nolan and Mary Ann exemplify what the department is all about and the service-oriented nature of this organization. Now, to the most important part is recognizing the recipient of the Nolan Miller Award, Mr. Kylie Whitaker. Kylie has played a critical role in the implementation of various accountability measures and data collection related to career and technical education. During his early days in CTE, he managed the Technical Education Data Systems, or Teds, which helped track data for students in schools. More recently, he served as a data steward for CTE and now as an assistant director. During his time at the department, Kylie has developed, has helped collect, manage, and interpret data that has been used to make decisions at all levels in CTE to include the design of systems related to college and career readiness, student transitions, dual credit, industry certifications, and many more activities, all the while securing grants and building relationships with our educational partners. One of Kylie's greatest assets is his customer service. Kylie has traveled thousands of miles across the state presenting trainings and works tirelessly to improve processes for districts, schools, and teachers. For these reasons, it is with great pleasure that I re-present to Kylie Whitaker the 2019 Kevin M. Nolan, Mary Ann Miller Award. And I've known Kylie, I think, almost since I came to the department. Kylie, if you go out in the state and you talk to anyone, they know who Kylie is. And that's common among a lot of folks at the department. He is the person you go to when you have a new project and you don't know how you're going to do it. Kylie always finds a solution. So we appreciate your service.
For my friends who know me, they know I like to talk anyway, so I'd say two things, if that's okay, Kevin, and I'll try not to waste too much of your guys' time, but I would like to say these things. One, it's amazing that I get paid to actually come in here and make students' futures brighter. It's a big deal of mine. David knows, one of my slogans I go by is, K-12 is not about making better K-12 students, it's about making better students after they leave K-12 and making sure that they succeed in life. So it's amazing that I get paid to do that. The second thing I want to say is that out of all the KDE employees here, it's a super big honor for me to be recognized for this. And if I can tell one quick story, I'll tell you exactly why, because I want to tell you the quality of the people that work here. I've been here for 18 years. 11 years ago, my wife broke her neck right before Christmas in a bad car wreck. I was super worried because she only gets, I mean, she gets paid hourly. If she doesn't go to work, we don't get paid. I wasn't making very much at the time. And the Department of Ed donated over two months of time to me to take off with my wife and family. I had a one-year-old and a four-year-old at the time. They paid my bills for me. They bought my Christmas presents for my kids that year. And I just can't thank people enough. And so this place is more like family than it is for work. And I just, just appreciative to get to come in here every day and work. And so this award means the world to me. Thank you.
I think the members of the board need to hear people like you, sir, that let us know what it is like a family here and how much the people work together and respect one another. And we're very proud of your service. Thank you. We are now going to, as they used to say at the movie theater, let's all go down to the lobby. Now, none of you all are old enough to remember that. But Erin and I remember that, and then we will have, come back up for lunch, reconvene at 1:00. The Kentucky Board of Education will come, meeting will come back to order. The next item on the agenda is the public comment segment. As I've mentioned at the December 12th meeting, that is a, or I guess it was actually at the next meeting, that is a thing where up to 10 speakers can sign up for a maximum of three minutes. So far, today, two members, two individuals have signed up to speak to the board. The first is Bridget Bloom Ramsey. I think she may be with the Pritchard Committee, and she wants to talk about accountability. And having served with Bridget Bloom Ramsey for a number of years on the State Board of Education, it gives me great pride in telling you, you have three minutes.
And thank you, Chairman Karam. It's a pleasure to sit on this side of the table and present to you fond memories of sitting on that side of the table with you. So thank you all for giving me a few minutes today. I actually think I was part of ensuring that this public comment period was either established or reestablished some years ago. So I think it is important that the public have an opportunity to comment during state board meetings and other meetings of the state. These are, in fact, the people's meetings. And so I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. I wanted just a few minutes to reference a letter that we sent to the Kentucky Board of Education members last week in response to concerns about the accountability model. And before I get to that letter, which I won't go into in detail because you have the letter and you have the detail of our concerns in the letter, and we know that the regulation is open for public comment, and we will pursue comment through that venue as well. But what I'd like to start off with, President Todd, you asked questions about Mississippi, and I was really glad that you did. The nation is watching Mississippi right now. And our refrain, as you mentioned a generation ago, was thank goodness for Mississippi. Because thank goodness for Mississippi, we were not dead last. So now a generation, fast forward a generation later, we're in the middle of the national rankings. That's not, that is something to be proud of, that we've made progress. But I imagine us halfway up a very steep hill. And we have pushed the boulder together halfway up that very steep hill. For the last two to three years, the Pritchard Committee has said to Kentucky, we are at risk of that boulder flying back down the hill on top of us. We have hit a plateau and we are beginning to decline. If we don't identify a sense of urgency to move from good to great, we will lose the progress of a generation of Kentuckians who fought hard. Our policymakers together, our K-12 and post-secondary institutions together, our teachers together, to realize this progress. So we, the next generation, in service to the work of the last generation, owe a great debt. And to pay that great debt, I believe we need to ensure greater progress with greater urgency than we have ever before. And so I have had the pleasure of talking with Mississippi recently about their progress. Their answer, briefly, succinctly, was attention to high-quality standards, deepening teaching practice around those standards, and ensuring a high-quality accountability system that measures student's results and requires Mississippians to own their truth. The third thing, those early NAEP results that they're seeing, particularly in reading, are coming from a commitment to reading science. A commitment to the evidence that exists that we've gathered as a nation over the last three to four decades, the science of reading and what works, and ensuring that's what we're equipping our teachers to do in the classroom. Mississippi now says, yes, we've gone from good to great, or I'm sorry, we've gone from the bottom to the middle. We've achieved great. We've achieved national average on NAEP. What are we going to place our next big bets on? They will say, as we did in the 1990s, we've increased outcomes for all students, but we're not closing achievement gaps. So where are we placing our next big bets? It's long past time for Kentucky to place our next big bets. One of those is on our accountability model. And I'm not here to tell you that every few years we need to tinker with the accountability model, because it's my belief that we do not. We have a skeletal structure in place that we've had in place for over a generation now. And that skeletal structure is critically important, accountability and standards. But the more we tinker with it, the more we erode confidence in the system at the local level. So we've got to get it right, and we've got to stick to it. We've expressed concern to you in this letter that the accountability structure that we've put in place that is measuring our progress under ESSA is actually masking significant achievement gaps and saying to the public, certain achievement gaps are not significant, when in fact, we should be ensuring that the public understands they are significant. And here's my reason why. The accountability model is only going to take us so far. What are our next big bets? Our next big bets, President Todd, I would submit, are exactly what you ask about, local innovation, local commitment to excellence, to ensure a unique response to each and every one of our young people and their unique needs locally. So we're trying to identify those bright spots. Robertson County is one, and Kelly Foster can tell you Robertson County's story. And we have a bright spot right up on that story. Henderson is a great example, South Heights Elementary, where the progress for elementary school students, reading and math proficiency for African-American students at South Heights is twice the state average. You saw the trend data earlier. We cannot, one of our big bets needs to be to ensure that we are not leaving one of Kentucky's students behind and that we, in fact, will have the courage to own our truth. Our African-American students are not being served well in this state. We are failing to deliver for them in many, many respects. We are failing to deliver for them in ways that we are not so drastically failing to deliver for our low-income students. But we have problems there as well. So our letter about the accountability model is encouragement, is a request that we, as a state, in fact, own our truth, that we communicate to the public honestly so that communities can respond to the unique needs of our students locally in the way they each deserve. And by placing that big bet on being honest and transparent, owning our truth, honoring innovation and entrepreneurial activity in our schools and districts that's results in success, we will, in fact, as Kentuckians, this generation of Kentuckians, in service to the generation that led us here, go from good to great. Thank you all.
You cleverly would not catch my eye because you knew you'd now been...
I knew you were going to stop me. And I was on a roll.
You may have had, you may have had former board member a small pass.
Thank you. I did make sure my cellphone was off.
Very good.
Thank you all, and thank you for your service.
Donnie Wilkerson, Wilkerson, is that right?
It was Senator Unai.
Wants to talk about standards and accountability.
Amen to our former board member. Thank you for your presentation.
Just remember, you don't have former board member purpose.
I understand. May I have latitude of seconds? Thank you. You can't imagine how difficult it is, I'm sure you can, to condense what should take 30 minutes into three. It is quite difficult. My name's Donnie Wilkerson. I'm a teacher at Jamestown Elementary School in southern Kentucky, and I'm here just solely on my own volition. I'm not speaking for anyone else but me. Seven years ago, we warned that the next generation's science standards were woefully deficient. But in the rush to be first, à la Common Core, those warnings were ignored. Three years' grace to practice and learn without accountability now yield two years of live scores showing that under 31% of Kentucky kids are proficient in science. A decade of prior testing instead had them in the high 60s. Of course, no one really believes that our great kids are now less than half as smart. The problem, of course, the standards and the test. Now it's time to renew them and hopefully fix this egregious error. But wait, we just adopted new social studies standards and tests modeled on the failed science fiasco. Social studies students and educators have been given zero years of grace before going live with accountability. Egregiously, these students and educators are held accountable this year for the old standards while asked to learn and teach the new ones, to then be field-tested this fall at the next grade level, depriving the accountable classroom teacher from even seeing the format of the new test. Compounding the obvious unfairness, sample test items promised last fall are still not available. We cautioned against using the flawed C-3 inquiry model as a foundation for new standards, but legislators and former board and commissioner ignored us and pointed to the little opposition they had received from classroom teachers, citing instead examples of received support. Turns out, virtually all this support came from the promulgators of the standards. The rank and file had yet to focus on them, but now most have, and they're not happy. And the students who will suffer most, according to the research, the struggling ones from those gap groups we should be most concerned about. Although almost always obfuscated, our position's been clear. A heavily content and background knowledge-based, explicit, teacher-led instructional model, not just in science and social studies, but in all areas, is supported by the overwhelming research and based on meta-analysis of a plethora of peer-reviewed studies. The prevailing so-called student-led inquiry, discovery, and project-based learning constructivist model, though very high-sounding, is not. Continuing to ignore the bulk of the research is shameful. And no matter what anyone tells you about the social studies standards, Lewis and Clark, the Trail of Tears, the Underground Railroad, the Civil War, Ellis Island, women's suffrage, and yes, even King and the Civil Rights Movement, indeed everything in the 19th and 20th centuries has been removed from the elementary school history progression. Denying kids these learning opportunities is shameful. Look it up, 1791, the Constitution is when the history progression stops at elementary school. Want to be first? I've got a paragraph. Want to be first? Be first to adopt knowledge-rich standards in all subjects. Push colleges of education and districts to train teachers in brain-based, high-effect-size, explicit instruction pedagogies, then administer quick, but valid and reliable normed assessments in each core subject each year at all grade levels. This simple solution just might be the answer to Kentucky, indeed the country's, education woes. Ignoring those flat lines and deplorable gaps Rhonda shared with you earlier, while continuing to follow the decade-long madness of the same non-research-based constructivist model is shameful. I humbly ask for your clarifying questions and additional time to present this simple plan at a future board meeting. Please, at least listen. Doing otherwise would be shameful.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody have a comment or question? Thank you.
One quick thing, I hope the board is aware that they are allowed to ask clarifying questions, and because in the past... Because in the past, I think some of the board members felt that they were constrained. I'm not allowed to ask additional questions, but you guys are allowed to ask any questions you would like, so...
I did, I did just say... The only time I have said, please don't ask questions, has been for a particular case, sir.
Right, yeah, right.
Where it was very important that we be guarded, because it's in a state that we didn't need to be asking questions.
I have asked for time repeatedly from the past board to come and actually show the research and the data and all of the information that's out there.
I think Lee has a question.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have that written up in some fashion?
I do, I do, and I can tweak it and email it to all of you.
I'd like to know that, I mean, I remember the controversy about the Common Core when it first came up, but I'd like to know kind of the history of the science standard and what has happened and where did it end up? Because I haven't kept track of that.
It goes deeper, it goes deeper to the brain-based research on how we learn. It speaks to what Ms. Ramsey talked about with the reading in Mississippi. It's the same concept. They're going to explicit strategies now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Secretary of Education and Workforce Development Cabinet. That would be the Lieutenant Governor.
Can I just sit here, or do I need to go here?
No, you're...
Okay.
You're the Lieutenant Governor.
I just want to make sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
You go wherever you want.
All right, all right, you're right. Well, thank you all so much for allowing me an opportunity to update you. I was at a, at this Cabinet Secretaries' meeting this morning, which apparently set off alarm bells because my phone blew up with people thinking I was having my baby this morning because I wasn't in this chair. So I'm not. I'm here today, but I wanted to follow up on a couple of the, of the Cabinet Secretary meeting points, too, in addition to what's going on in the Cabinet. But I know that everyone here was either attended or watched both the State of the Commonwealth and the Budget Address that we saw in the last few weeks. And I just wanted to make sure to point out that this is the first year in 14 years where we have not had to make cuts, and we've actually been able to reinvest. Our priority was public education. And so our reinvestment began with our education-first budget that was unveiled last week. And in that, there was lots and lots of information that I hope that you all will look at on your own about how we're proposing to invest in the continuum of education in Kentucky. Because that is certainly very important to all of us. It doesn't, it's not just K-12, it's early childhood into post-secondary life. And that leads me into what this cabinet is attempting to do with this vision. My goal as the Secretary of Education is to create a truly cradle-to-career cabinet, so that, again, we can approach education for the continuum that it is. My belief is that we tend to lose our students, or adults even, in the gaps, in the transition phases, whether it be from early childhood to elementary or certainly secondary to whatever post-secondary is for that child. The governor and I are on the same page with the belief that while there has been some headbutting over higher education and maybe the workforce and apprenticeships, our belief is that we don't have enough people doing either. And so our job is not to tell people what they should be doing, but to create every opportunity that we can and help people to become who they want to become. And that fits right into the vision of the administration. And I'm sure many of you have heard the administration's vision. We call it, "Where are we going as a state?" And the "where" is an acronym. And it's really important for me to point out that everyone in the education cabinet, everyone on this board, is at the foundation of that vision. Because education is the foundation of exactly the progress that we need to make in Kentucky, not just for ourselves, but for families and future families. And we've already started to work on how we were going to do that. So the "W" stands for wages, and we want to make sure that every Kentuckian can afford to work one job to raise their family. Otherwise, we have all seen in the classroom the repercussions of that. The "H" is for healthcare. We believe that every Kentuckian deserves access to quality and affordable healthcare. And some people may say, well, what is education's role in that? And I would tell you that it is, it is the connector. It is the way that we educate our families and our kids about what opportunities are out there and how they can sign up and gain access if they don't have it. The first "E" is education. We obviously believe that everyone, regardless of their zip code, deserves access to a quality public education. And certainly believe that this board shares in that belief, and that's why we're all here. The "R" is for retirements, because we want to make sure that we honor the promises that have been made to all of the public servants across Kentucky, not just teachers, school employees, social workers, first responders, the list goes on and on. And the last "E" is example. And we want to make sure that we lead by example with a tone that is positive and not, not one that creates conflict. We're not going to agree on everything with everyone who's in state government, but we have to deal with those disagreements in a way that will allow us to return to the table to talk about issues that are important. And so that's something that we're very committed to in this administration, and I certainly know, committed to you on this board. With that said, we created in the cabinet the "E"s, what I call the "E"s of education and workforce development. And it involves everything from early childhood to post-secondary life. And the first "E" is to make sure that we expand access to early childhood education and the skills in early elementary school that we know our students need to be successful. When our students get to middle school, we want to create exposure for them, exposure to the opportunities that exist in their communities that they may not be aware of, industries and businesses that are there that those kids can kind of get a look at and realize that this is what exists in their own community. So that, when they transition to high school, they have real-world experience opportunities. And we can make sure that whether that's an internship or an apprenticeship or a school-to-work program, that our students have the opportunity to go out into the workforce and to get an idea of maybe what they want to do for the rest of their life. Or it also equally is important to know what you don't want to do, right? So sometimes that's helpful, too. And then lastly, in post-secondary, that's where we want our students to hone their expertise. And that can come in many different forms, as I said before, whether it's a four-year college degree, whether it's an apprenticeship, whether it's the workforce, or a community and technical college. That is where our students, again, become experts in their field and are able to, not just, again, support themselves, but support their future families. We have started a few initiatives that have led to just that. One, and I'm sure you all saw, was that we have waived the GED fee for Kentuckians. And I can tell you that we have had a huge uptick in interest in folks who are signing up to take the test. We analyze the barriers and realize that, obviously, cost for someone who does not have a high school diploma is a huge barrier. And so what we, whatever we can do to help with that, we wanted to do. And so we reallocated about $600,000 per year to go towards making sure that adults who want to take the GED have that opportunity, regardless of how much money they may have in their bank account. And it's been a success so far. The governor and I have been asked several times, well, what are you going to do if you run out of money? And I said, that would be a great problem for us to have. If we have so many folks who are taking advantage of this that we have to figure out how to fund more money in the cabinet, I welcome that challenge, certainly. We also were awarded, we were one of six states, Kentucky was, to be awarded the NGA College and High School Dual Credit Workshop. And it was a very competitive process, and we're going to send some folks from the cabinet, from KDE, and also from the College on Post-Secondary Education to represent us at this meeting and to figure out how we can continue to provide in-depth technical assistance for dual credit across Kentucky, because that certainly opens doors and creates opportunities for our students that they may never have had before. So to be one of six states to get accepted this program is very important for us, especially with where we're talking about, about helping our high school kids transition. Kentucky actually has been ranked number one by the Department of Labor and Employer Engagement and Repeat Customer Care Rates. So we are going to be highlighted in terms of a quality workforce service to our employers in a case study coming up very soon. And so, again, all of these things, whether it's the GED, whether it's dual credit for high school kids, or whether it's the workforce, we are committed to investing in Kentuckians in whatever phase of life that they're in so that they can create a better life for their families. And I know you all can appreciate that. We have hired a million people. It seems like in lots of positions. We are still working on human resources and early childhood executive director at this point, but we have moved very quickly in putting people in place. And you can either chalk that up to my impatience or my current physical state, but I felt a little sense of urgency to get people in place as quickly as we could. And I will tell you that one of the, one of the things that we are working on doing overarchingly in the cabinet is we have found that there's a huge lack of language and focus on education. And I know that sounds odd, because it is the Cabinet for Education and Workforce Development. But we want to make sure that whenever we're talking about workforce, we talk about it in a way that education is the foundation of that workforce, all the way down to early childhood. And so one of the, one of the innovations that we are, we have put into place now, we have the Kentucky Workforce Innovation Board, and many of you may have heard of it. It is, it is a very unique intersection of private industry and education. And this, this board serves as an advisor to the governor. And we have major players like UPS and Toyota and folks like that on the industry side. And what I noticed was, we did not have enough of a voice coming from the education side. And so we have one director that has been working with the board, and she, she has been working just as hard as she can to keep up with the initiatives that are going on. She's in a wonderful job, but she needs some help. So she will become the director of, of the private industry side of the board. And we have hired a now-former high school principal to serve as the director of the education initiatives side of the board, because we want to make sure that we're giving voice to both sides of the cabinet as we talk about not just the workforce in the present tense, but how we can continue to produce the workers and the industries that we need here in Kentucky in the future sense. So looping that education language back in has been very important to me to make sure that that serves as the foundation for economic development in Kentucky, because we are. And that's pretty much where we are right now. We, we have worked really hard, like I said, to staff up and to shatter silos across state government and agencies and to make sure that we're partnering with folks, and even KDE. You know, the Cabinet for Education needs to be partnered with KDE. We need to partner with the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. There's lots of overlap. And so our goal is to build those relationships and to reach out to our partners and to bring people to the table, because those are the issues that affect Kentuckians every day. So we will continue to do that and, and work towards a more collaborative culture that brings in the folks that, that deal with these challenges every day to help us solve those most pressing problems. So, other than that, I haven't been doing much. But I will, I will turn it back over to you. That's my update for now. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Lieutenant Governor.
Just a comment. I think that's a lot in a short amount of time. Thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you finding any, any willingness of these departments to get out of their silos and come together?
We are, we are. Of course, there's some new folks in new places. But what we found, I think, in every cabinet as the secretaries kind of get a feel for what's going on is there's not a lot of communication across agencies and cabinets. And so either we're not aware of really important work that's going on that we could support, or we're duplicating work, and we're not being as efficient and effective as we can. And so that's our goal, because, again, as we said, this is not just an initiative that we can call a win coming out of a cabinet. This is about kids and families in Kentucky, and we owe it to them to be as efficient and effective as possible. And if that means that we need to have a couple more meetings or a couple more conversations, then that's, that's certainly something we can do. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I have to run. I'm going to my last doctor's appointment. Thank you all.
Thank you. And you're soon on the hiatus for, is that today?
Yes, today's my last day officially. And, yeah.
On behalf of the board, we wish you absolutely the best, best in your upcoming birth.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ten fingers, ten tones.
Yes, and lots of books, thanks to you all. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the 2020-2022 Biennial Budget Update. Associate Commissioner Robin Kenny and Director Charlie Harmon will present this. And we are in a slight need to begin making up a little time here.
I think in, in order to save time, we're just going to have Tracy come up and Robin and Charlie will just pivot over to Tracy after the budget presentation, since they're all related.
Awesome.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again today. We're going to continue our conversation about the biennial budget request. Since the last time we spoke, of course, the governor has introduced the budget, the executive branch budget bill. We are very, very fortunate and appreciative because as we look at the budget, we do see that this is a education-first budget. And as we go through sort of the highlights of what you'll see, we're also very fortunate that we have a lieutenant governor and secretary of the cabinet that is a very active participant in the budget itself as well as any programs that we're trying to advocate for. So we're very, very fortunate in that regard. Just as a little bit of background, some of you may be familiar with the biennial budget process and how it works. But the governor did introduce their, his budget on January 28. It has been assigned to the House Appropriations and Revenue Committee. In fact, this morning, as you all were going over your very important work this morning, the Office of the State Budget Director, Director John Hicks, was appearing in front of both the Senate A and R and the House A and R describing and explaining for about an hour. And each of those legislative bodies did a really good job and, in fact, focused on the education-first pieces very, very well. This is the beginning of the dance, I will call it, with the governor's recommended. And then it goes through the legislative body. So it'll go to the House first. And I will tell you, the expectation always is, it's going to change. I mean, it's not going to be exactly as it is introduced. And along the way, it's up to us to stay diligent and focused on seeing what each step along the way brings to us. But it'll go through the House and then to the Senate. And if they can agree, it then goes into conference committees and then maybe even ultimately free conference. And then, then it gets really exciting. So they do have 60 working days, and April 15 is the last day that they can actually do this. It is their primary mission in the biennial budget process, is to pass a budget. So that is their primary focus. And then, of course, the governor has actions to either sign the budget, line item veto, or veto in its entirety, which is rarely a good thing. So we expect and hope that we will have a budget. I will say, one, as you go out and look at, the budget bill is House Bill 352. You can go out to the Legislative Research Site and you can actually read it word for word for word, if you'd like to do that. I will say that when it starts, please don't be completely alarmed if you don't see language in there that you are used to seeing before. It tends to start out kind of general, and as it goes through the process, it becomes a little more specific. So if you are interested in a particular thing, it takes both the combination of words and dollars to actually understand what is comprised of the budget. So sometimes, we will have money already, and it doesn't specifically tells, tell us where to spend that. That gives us maximum flexibility on how we expend those dollars. But as it rolls through, you'll see people that are more interested in becoming a little more specific on how those dollars should be expended. So, so don't be surprised as we see those roll along. We're going to cover just really high level. I'm going to turn it over to Charlie now. I'm going to turn it over to Charlie now, and Charlie's going to walk through some kind of the high points of some details that are contained in our budget. This is in the department's appropriations as recommended by the governor.
Thank you, ma'am. Probably none of us here are surprised to see the first item on the board, $2,000 teacher salary increases. It's something that the governor campaigned on, and he delivered. It's in his budget request, and this morning at both the House and Senate, it was the most interested topic. So, there's a lot of discussion going on, pretty much positive so far at this point, which is pretty good. It's basically a, we've modeled the language after the National Board Certified Teacher Salary Supplement, so it is subject to teachers' retirement. So, all those good things that you get with a pay increase stay with you. So, it's really positive. SEEK. We also, in this case, we had a SEEK item in our request. This item that was included in the governor's budget was a 1% increase, which, if you're familiar with the SEEK per pupil, that takes it from $4,000 per student to 40-40, which in math terms, that's around $39 million in the first year and $48 in the second. So, that's a lot of money. Of course, the SEEK appropriations is about $3 billion, so it's a big appropriation as well. Also, in the current year we're sitting in, there is an expected SEEK excess. So, we anticipate at the end of this year, we will have $85 million extra, which there's never really extra. There's language in the current budget bill that reserve those funds for pupil transportation in school districts through the SEEK formula. This language in the new budget bill would change that. It would keep it all in education, of course. It would earmark $17.2 million for school district health insurance. We always pay that out of our budget. Over the last three or four years, we have accumulated a shortfall in health insurance. The health insurance rates are just high. Everybody knows that. So, over the period of about four or five years, we've accumulated that shortfall, so that's funded in there. The governor also mentions textbooks in several of his speeches. So, there are $17 million out of the surplus that's earmarked for textbooks, and we'll talk about the total textbooks in just a moment. And the balance $50.8 million of that lapse was earmarked for the teacher raises in the first year. In several places in the budget, it talks about excess funds, and this one, this point here is if there is SEEK excess in FY '21 or FY '22, it will be earmarked for preschool and all-day kindergarten programs. You've heard Lieutenant Governor talk about the importance of early childhood education, and that's reflected there. There are also a number of other places in the budget bill outside of the Department of Education's budget that earmark any excess for preschool and all-day kindergarten. Big win. Here's the textbooks. Historically, we've had around $17 million a year for textbooks, and the governor was able to earmark $11 million each year. So, that's still a big number for us. Districts will benefit a lot. Currently, the statute's earmarked textbook money for kindergarten through eighth grade. And also, the lines have been changed a little bit with technology. We also include instructional resources and allowable expenses for that. A lot of curriculum and textbooks available online now, so they can buy those types of subscriptions or software. Another thing that's included is, we hope will be a huge win that gets to stay in the budget throughout the process, is $10 million, $5 million each fiscal year for a preschool program that supports, provides supports in disadvantaged areas. We've got a lot of data that show maybe half or so of kids that are eligible for preschool even go, okay? Some would rather have other options that they choose. This is a resource here that we're going to be able to go out and beat the bushes to try to get that group of kids who don't currently attend state preschool to attend. That's $5 million each year. School safety, Senate Bill 1 of 2019 had a huge price tag to it, and everybody knew when that passed, it had a huge price tag. There was one piece that had a mandated funding requirement, and that was the facility piece, and that is included in the governor's budget. The other price-tagged pieces in Senate Bill 1 were as funds were available. Those language was in there. So, that's a big win, too, also for school districts. Estill County Area Technology Center. That district has gone above and beyond, and they raised a neighborhood of $9 million of their own to acquire property and build a building to have their own ATC, really stepped out on a limb. And this budget provides the operating expenses, the teacher salaries, and the operating that it will cost to operate that ATC in Estill County. Going to start opening hopefully in FY '22, which is the second year of the biennial. Another huge win, Capital Projects at Kentucky School for the Blind, Kentucky School for the Death, and the FFA Leadership Training Center in Hardensburg. We have two pools that were funded, HVAC, heating, air conditioning. All of these buildings were built in the '50s and '60s, not all anymore. Recently, we've had two that have either been remodeled or new construction that are in great shape as we speak, but there's about 15 other buildings at each campus that 30, 40 years old, that have a lot of old duct tape holding things together. This will be a huge win to keep these projects in the budget throughout the process. They've also included a normal maintenance pool. It's usually around $700,000. They've raised it to a million, which is another big win for us. Hopefully, that can stay in there. So, that was all the good news. This is, you know, we had a lot of pieces on our ABRs that we talked about a few weeks back. This is one that's worth mentioning that wasn't funded. We have both of the normal operating expenses that KSB and KSD have not been able to keep up with the cost of inflation. Salaries of the teachers have gone up. They're tied to the Jefferson County pay scale, and heating and electricity costs at the schools are really high. And this is, right now, the department is supplementing them through our department budget, and it's, you know, it's really cutting us too thin. So, we've included this item, and we really need that to get back in the budget language, if possible. And we had a lot of items on there that we wanted, but this is the only one that rose to the level of bringing back to your attention.
Any member have a question? Or Robin or Charlie? If not Tracy, just want to roll on?
I'll start rolling. As Robin said, they, no, no, I don't. I've got to hand out. Okay. We are on Day 20 of the Legislative Session of 60 days, so we're a third of the way through to probably the easiest third. They must adjourn by April 15th. As Robin said, the House A and R and Senate A and R both met this morning, and they presented the budget proposal. So, we will see the budget subcommittees start really rolling out and having all of the agencies present. Our staff will present on February 19th to the Budget Review Subcommittee on Elementary and Secondary Education, and we will do a fairly detailed presentation on what the budget looks like. And we will, of course, meet with the chairman and other leadership members in the House before that rolls out. House Education met this morning. We'll go ahead and talk about a little bit of some of the bills that have passed out and that have been considered so far. We'll just kind of have some questions about those if you have any. We'll just kind of go through a list of them. In the House, though, this morning, we talked about Senate Bill or House Bill 22, which eliminates corporal punishment. That passed out of committee. Also, House Bill 340, Speech Language Pathologists. There's legislation to require a salary supplement, just like the National Board Certified for Speech Language Pathologists. No funding appropriated with this particular bill, but it also says if and when funding becomes available. So, that's probably the best way to write that at the moment. It did pass out of committee, though. And also, Senate Bill 8 was considered in the House, the school safety bill, and I expect that it will be on the floor this week of the House, and we'll see the school safety provisions that were amended from last session, the big school safety bill, Senate Bill 1, will move forward fairly quickly. And the $18 million for the facility upgrades for schools is included in the governor's proposed budget at this moment. As far as other legislation that's pending, there's, you all got a little script out that explains kind of where all the legislation for elementary and secondary bill priorities are at the moment. Some things just for consideration so that you'll know, Senate Bill 42 requires districts that issue ID badges to include on those hotlines for suicide prevention, domestic violence and sexual assault. That passed out of the House. We expect that won't have any problems moving forward. We also have a virtual high school bill that's moving forward. This is geared at those who did not complete high school but are age 21 and over, so that local districts can provide those services to that age group that's above the cutoff age for high school. We also see Senate Bill 77 requires the department to develop instructional resources around child abuse and child sexual abuse, and this is geared for students. We have a lot of legislation and requirements to meet and provide training and additional information and resources for teachers and staff, but this would actually require us to do something geared towards students that would be age-appropriate. Somewhat controversial, we'll have to see how that lands, and we've already talked to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services about this legislation. We would normally not create legislation or create instructional resources around that. We would need guidance from experts to deal with that type of content most of the time. We see the scholarship tax credit bill is back, Senate Bill 110. It's sitting out there. We'll have to see what happens with it this session. Senate Bill 126, we've got two charter training bills to take care of the charter training issue that we've been experiencing. That's Senate Bill 126 and House Bill 220. Both, House Bill 220 is moving, and Senate Bill 126 was just filed on Friday. In the House, we have lots and lots of bills that are pending also. House Bill 37 is to require arts and visual education, arts education and visual performing arts to be put back into the classrooms at a much higher rate than it currently. House Bill 87 is a high school graduation requirement. Everyone would have to fulfill, fill out the FAST form, for financial aid form, before they would be allowed to graduate. There is a waiver provision in that. That's also encountered a little bit of resistance as well, because it's a graduation requirement. It's a non-academic graduation requirement. That's probably one of the bigger issues that's come up with the House Education Committee. Also, House Bill 165, we've seen this legislation a lot. It would require 120 minutes of non-teaching time for teachers. It would be planning time dedicated for teachers to look at other things besides just classroom coordination, those types of things. And then, House Bill 263 would require the department to work on increasing computer science participation and to figure out a way, some type of programmatic way, to address that for students who are not likely to take computer science or demographics that aren't easily engaged in computer science classes. There's a lot of legislation that hasn't been filed yet that's being discussed, and some of that has to do with work-ready, dual credit, CTE. We're still in discussions about what to do about that, but there's movement behind the scenes on it. So, there's a lot of legislation that's being discussed that hasn't been dropped just yet. We'll see some more bills, some in the next few days, that we'll have to see what happens. The last day to request bill drafts is coming up at the end of this month, February 21st, and then the next week on March 2nd for the House, and then March 3rd for the Senate. That's the last day they can file brand-new bills. Now, they can always amend bills, and they can gut bills and put other information in them. So, you have to kind of track everything still, but there's lots of ways for them to put legislation out there, even after the filing deadlines are approached. This morning also, they did talk about some of the revenue provisions. House Bill 351 are the revenue provisions that accompany the state budget bill, and the governor was proposing raising taxes on cigarette packs. They did a big tax increase last session, but they'll increase that again by 10 more cents. They'll also be looking at taxing vaping products and other tobacco products generally. They were looking at that. They're going to raise taxes, or the, let's see, sports wagering bill, they're going to be supporting that for additional revenue production and returning some coal severance revenues to coal counties and doing some additional things like that. But they did hit a little bit of those highlights for what's in the revenue provisions with the budget bill. Obviously, a lot of the legislation that's pending right now has appropriations that are not attached to them, but will have to be considered when the House puts together their budget, what they'll key up with actually, what they produce and provide in the House version of the budget. And we'll see which legislation gets tied to what and actually gets funded as that moves forward. Do you all have any questions about?
Lou has a question, and then Mike.
Two quick questions, and I should tell this story, too. I was able to listen to the governor's budget address, and when he talked about a tax on vaping, I thought he said a tax on bacon, which I thought was a really good idea. I may share, but. But in all seriousness, Tracy, do you write up any oversight of what's happening with the bills? Is that something you regularly produce, and if so, is that something we could get a ad copy?
We should have, we did a production for, and it should be in the Legislative Update piece in the board portal.
Okay, good.
All the legislation, we pulled out elementary and secondary legislation today with where they are in terms of action, so where that they stand in action.
But do you keep that up on a regular basis?
We do.
Okay.
We do. And then, I think Commissioner Brown's wanting to send out every Friday some type of update to the board, and he's including kind of the big pieces that happened during the week.
Thank you. That would be really helpful. My second question for Charlie and Robin, I did have a question. Mike and I received a question from a superintendent. It's not one specifically we want to ask, but in the issue about Senate Bill 2019 and security and facilities upgrades, if a district has already invested in those upgrades since 2019 Senate Bill 1, is there any consideration, if this in fact does become part of the budget, is there any consideration that they could apply for retroactive support, or does that take a different action?
There's nothing in the language to suggest that currently.
Okay.
That that has been a question that's been raised.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if in discussions over the next few weeks, that will come to some fruition, that they would be able to try to reimburse districts or not. I would think we'll just have to see what they do.
Right. Just passing it along. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Michael.
What are you hearing about the, and this is kind of a little closer to home for us, the state school board? What are you hearing about what the Senate wants to do with the current board via the past board and all that?
Confirmation.
Senator Shivers announced on the floor that he had drafted legislation to amend the statute that creates the state board and how it's formed. He said he had not filed that yet, and I expect that to be a discussion point between him and the governor's office during the next few months about confirmation process and other things. So, obviously, it's a big discussion point in how that they're going to move forward. It sounded like, though, we haven't seen a draft of anything Senator Shivers has proposed at this point, that it's very much mirrors the provisions that's already in the statute. The governor should be looking at these components, bipartisanship, extensive backgrounds in education and those things. So, but that firms that up just a little bit by actually mandating how many of each party, gender equality, all those kinds of things. So, at least that's what he spoke to on the floor. Until you see the language in the bill, you just never know. But that's kind of the main theme that's been discussed so far.
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We are now about to recess for the two committee meeting. The curriculum and instruction will meet here in the state boardroom. Operations Committee will meet in Room 516. If possible, please try to get back by 3 o'clock, if it's at all possible. The committee will come back to order. We're now moving on to the 18th item on the agenda, which is Report of the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee. It says we will have two action items for approval.
Yes, we do. I have, "On behalf of the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee, I move approval of waiver of training requirements of 701-KAR8:020 from the Mayfield and Somerset Independent School Districts, as well as Bell, Carroll, Christian, Davies, Graves, Harlan, Henry, Hopkins, Knott, Leslie, Owlesley, Pulaski, Simpson, and Tremble County School Districts, and conditionally approve any future waiver of 701-KAR8:020, Section 3 and 4, requested by letter to the interim commissioner from a superintendent in one of the 156 school districts not named."
Since this is an item from the committee, it does not need to be a second. There does not need to be a second, so this matter is before you now, in case there is any member who has a con- who has a comment or question. Seeing none, the motion in front of you then is to accept that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Holly?
Yes, also on behalf of the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee, I move approval of the strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act, otherwise known as the Perkins Five State Plan.
Again, this is a, coming from a committee, no requirement for a second. Is there any member who has a comment or question on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Is that all of?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. That is all the business from the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee. We will then move on to number 19, which is Report of the Operations Committee. Lee?
We need approval for the 2019-2020 local district tax rates that were levied by Gallantown, Lincoln, and Martin County School Districts. These normally come earlier in the year, but these folks had reasons that they're just coming to us in this February meeting, but we voted to approve those. We need approval by the committee at this time.
That's an item, again, coming from the committee that does not require a second. There is opportunity for discussion or questions or comments. Does anybody have a discussion or question or comment? In fact, Lee, the chair has a comment.
Yes, I was going to leave that to you.
This is the famous four-percenter. Back many, many years ago, the General Assembly enacted a 4% cap on, as a punitive measure to keep districts from going beyond 4%. And it, the only way you got more than 4% was if you had new growth in the district. And some districts are not taking the 4%, and it is not, in the chair's personal opinion, it is not a good idea. You're shortchanging your students at home when you do not take the 4%. It's unreasonable to believe that there not a need for growth in communities, and the 4% again was punitive, and it just, for seven years when I was previously on the board, Kevin, I tried to make headway, I don't know that I ever did, because we still have a lot that are not, so. Any other comment, because you'll hear that from me every time this one comes up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Second, we need approval of a new district facility plan, which the Ohio County School District has submitted, and these are plans that are submitted of each one, and this one is now up for approval, so.
Again, action from a committee, is there any discussion or question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
The next two are somewhat similar, is approval for the request from Davis County School District to waive construction project size limitations set forth in Section 305 of the School Facilities Planning Manual. The, this is for the Apollo School. The two schools are going to be asking for approval, were both the round schools that were built back in the open days, and they're somewhat limiting at this point in time. They're going to cover all their additional expenses with local money, so it's not going to be a budgetary impact on the state, but we move approval for the one for Davis County School, the Apollo School.
Any questions or discussion? It is important to let you know they took the 4%. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
That school was built in 1969. The next one was built in 1970. It's approval of the request from the Bowling Green Independent School District to waive construction project size limitations set forth in Section 305 of the School Facility Planning Manual. And again, the local community put up $2.5 million to help cover some of the expenses for that, and the superintendent of that school was here to make his passion plea for it and was very pleased that we were approving it, so.
Mr. Chair, did they take the 4%?
Yes, they did. My straight man over here, so.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Then we had two review items to report those, so.
Yes, please.
There's a new regulation, 702 KAR110, the School Security Risk Assessment Tool. This was the first reading regarding that tool, and we'll have a further reading in the future, but we heard that and heard, let's see, that wasn't John Akers, so he came in the second one. This has to do with the bill that was passed in order to improve school safety back in 2009, and the second item we reviewed was the repeal of, no, that's right, the school security thing, I'll go back, John Akers was here, he's had that security group for quite some time, and he brought also the Safety Marshal for the state of Kentucky with us, and so they jointly developed an assessment tool, and then the marshal will be the one that kind of enforces it. John will go and kind of help sell the plan, and one thing he mentioned that I thought was of interest is that he wants to hear from the other schools across the boundary of anything they have done that they think is no longer, they call them current practices, not best practices in this, so they can further incorporate this more safety features into their plan as they do these assessments, so that was our first review. The second one we did is the repeal of 702 KAR6045. It's a personnel issue with school nutrition employee qualifications. Turns out, the state had a rule on the books of the teaching and learning that those employees had to have, but then the federal folks came along in 2015 and basically overlaid a regulation that's stronger than one that we have, and so they want to do away with the Kentucky restriction and amend it so that it agrees with the federal restrictions. And that was the first reading as well on that particular review item.
Anything else, Lee? Next item on the agenda, which is item number 20, is a Hearing Officers' Report. Interim General Counsel Todd Allen will present a review of regulations, and these will be items that will need board action.
The first item that I have for you, if I can get Joette to pull that up on the board portal, is the Hearing Officers' Report. I believe when Ashley Lant in my office participated in the KBE member orientation, she discussed the regulatory process. One of the board's major functions is promulgation of administrative regulations. And this report we will provide to you at every KBE meeting. It will be provided on your portal for your review, and it basically just gives you an overview of where all of the board's regulations are in process. Ashley covered that process with you, and it's rather lengthy, but this just gives you an overview again of where all of your regulations are in the process. The ones that you see there at the top, they say regulations reviewed by the Administrative Regulation Review Subcommittee at its January meeting. Those were regulations that were approved by the KBE at its October 2019 meeting. That just gives you an idea of how long it takes for these to move through the process and become effective. But in any event, if you ever have any questions about regulations that the board approves, this is where they're highlighted. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this point. I'm ready.
Is which one, are we, approval?
No approval necessary on this, it's just an information.
Oh, well, that's.
Yep.
Then move on, since no one.
So the next item on your agenda is the Statement of Consideration for 780 KAR2060, Discipline of Students. I'll have the program area come join me on this. Again, whenever the board promulgates an administrative regulation by statute, it has to go out for a public comment period where we can receive either written comments from the public, or they can show up at a public hearing and make comments. This is a regulation where we did receive comments, and that triggers what is called a Statement of Consideration. So the agency has to review all of those comments and indicate formally in writing whether it's going to make changes to the regulation or not make changes based on those comments. And I'll let the program area introduce themselves and take it from here.
Good afternoon, Leslie Slaughter, Policy Advisor for the Office of Career and Technical Education and Student Transition.
David Horstman, Associate Commissioner of the Office of Career and Technical Education.
Tom Thompson, Director of Technical Schools and Continuous Improvement in the Office of Career and Technical Education.
This is Leslie's work, so I'm going to let her talk to you.
Well, there was one public comment received on this regulation. Again, this regulation deals with the discipline of students, specifically at the Kentucky-Tech Area Technology Centers. So I will remind you as a board that any time a regulation comes before you in Title 780, those regulations are specific to the state-run area technology centers that are managed through our office. So in addition to the Kentucky School for the Blind, the Kentucky School for the Deaf, you are also the governing body for those 53 area technology centers that are run by the state. So that is why a lot of times there will be specific policy items that come before you specifically for those schools. The feedback we received in the public comment was from a staff attorney with Kentucky Protection and Advocacy, and it was really just requesting a clarifying amendment within Section 3 of the regulation that clarifies that students at these schools, the area technology centers, who have IEPs are still afforded that opportunity through the disciplinary process to the requirements of IDEA. So really, the clarifying amendment that you'll see on Page 2, Lines 5 and 6, just inserts reference to the entire title section of our regulatory scheme that focuses on IDEA and the requirements of that federal law. So we agreed with that clarification and that amendment that was proposed, and again, you see it reflected in the draft before you today.
Does any member have a question or a comment? This is one that does require board action, and it will require a motion and a second. It's been moved by Lee, seconded by Claire. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item that is on the agenda is listed as the Litigation Report, and we will not open that document here because we're in a public meeting and that document's protected by the attorney-client privilege. I've provided that to all of you in advance to give you an overview of all the pending litigation that the board and the department are involved in. If at any time any individual member has questions about that, obviously you're free to speak with me individually, and I can provide some information. I'm not aware of any matter on the litigation report that requires any board action at this time, but if the board does want to discuss any specific matter, then I would assist you in moving into closed session to discuss that.
Thank you.
Otherwise, it's just provided to you for your information only.
Number 21 is Non-Resident Student Agreement Appeal.
Yes. So the next item is for the board's approval. Pursuant to statute, school districts can appeal to the commissioner and then to the State Board of Education when they have a dispute related to their non-resident student agreements. This matter has been through the administrative process, and it is now before the board for consideration of the Hearing Officer's recommended order and for the board to adopt a final order. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mike. Does this have anything to do with Pineville Independent School District and the Bell County School System?
It does not. That is not the matter that's before the board today. This one is the matter of Racelon Worthington Independent School District versus Greenup County School District.
Okay. I want to recuse myself on the Bell County one.
So this matter, as I indicated, the Hearing Officer has heard this matter, the parties have had an opportunity to present evidence and witnesses, and has issued to the State Board a recommended order. I've provided that to all of you in advance of the meeting, along with a confidential and attorney-client privilege memorandum summarizing this matter. At this point in time, the board can go into closed session to deliberate, to discuss its final order in this matter, and.
Or we can agree.
In any event, the board needs to adopt a final order in this matter in response to the Hearing Officer's recommended order. The Office of Legal Services has provided a draft, but that is obviously for the board's review, discussion, and consideration.
And that's been provided to the board?
Yes.
And the board has had an opportunity to review that. If there is a need to review it further, we would have to go into closed session. If you've reviewed it and you wish to move to agree with the Hearing Officer's report, I would need a motion to approve the Hearing Officer's report.
Let me back up for just a moment and recommend a few changes. On the order, the final order that was recommended to the board, I do have a few changes. We recognized a few matters needed to be changed in that. Again, that was provided to you in advance and is also available on the secure portal, I believe. In Paragraph Number 10, we needed to make a few date changes to reflect that changes would be going forward for the 2020-21 school year, not back to 2018-19. And then we also had recommended, it's not included in there, but we need to add a phrase that the two boards will exchange a list of students who were in attendance during the 2012-2013 school year. So those are the two tweaks that we have that we're recommending to the draft that was provided to you in advance.
Do I need a separate motion to add those two tweaks, or?
Your motion can be to adopt this.
With those two.
With those two, with those two tweaks, that's fine. So the board can either, at this point in time, if it wants to go into closed session to deliberate on the matter, can take action to go into closed session. Alternatively, it could take action to adopt the final order that's been provided, subject to the two amendments I've listed.
I have a motion to approve the Hearing Officer's report with the two tweaks, which is a new word of art. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Joanne seconded the motion. Claire made the motion, Joanne seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else, Todd?
I believe that concludes everything on the agenda from my office.
The next item on the agenda is board member sharing. This is per board policy. The agenda for each regular meeting shall include an item under which board members may raise issues not included on the agenda for the purpose of clarification, referral to a committee, or scheduling for future board review and/or action if such is the consensus of the board. Give some examples of what's normally shared. I got pictures of my granddaughter.
Oh, I like that.
I think people have shared positive, I mean.
And sometimes it will include if folks were, had thoughts about something in a presentation earlier in the day that they may want additional information on, discussion of how that would look at future meetings that might populate the agenda, those types of things.
We've also had members, in my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, who may have had something super positive in their district that they wanted to pass back on to the board and let people know. Not a, not a, not a good news item in the sense that we had that earlier in the thing, but, you know, something good going on, you know, and they want to talk about it. And we've had people who've communicated personal things and wanted to share them with the board. I mean, somebody's, I recall somebody who had a particular health problem, and they wanted to let the board members know they did, that they were okay now, and so it's just kind of a nice opportunity.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say...
Holly.
Yes. How much I enjoyed hearing Erin Ball, the 2020 Teacher of the Year. And it was interesting how echoes of her talk were all through our conversations today about equity and retention of minority teachers and those kinds of things. And so I would, I'd like to thank you all for, you know, having her on the agenda today because I thought that was really good. It's nice to hear the voice of teachers.
There's so much that needs to be done, but there's also so much good that's going on that it's just sometimes a shame we don't celebrate as much of the good that's going on.
I was, oh, go ahead.
Claire, and then Alvis.
I was at one of the education committee meetings not long ago, and the Pritchard Committee made a presentation of their, their big ask. And it was a wonderful presentation, and I think it fit in with everything we've talked about and the need for funding. It was, it was very insightful in terms of how education affects our economic future. And I think that was something that, if you have not had an opportunity to hear that presentation, it would be something I think every one of us would enjoy. And it makes me think back to your work on CARA because it, it really echoes what was done then.
Alvis?
Just had a comment. We seem to have a very aggressive agenda each meeting. I don't know if this is common practice, that the agenda is always just aggressive?
Always usually this aggressive. And I'm not suggesting we move to this, but I'm about to tell you, but in the past, and this was probably 10 years ago now, state board meetings were usually two days, but boards wanted to get away from that due to the commitments that you all have, and so we tried to go to a one, and we have had one-day meetings, the department and the board. Tried to have one-day regular meetings for at least the last probably eight to 10 years. That does result in a packed agenda. One remedy to that is occasionally to have a two-day meeting, to have a work session, to focus on a specific issue or issues that might otherwise get lost in the day-to-day running of education, which what are a lot of, these are very important decisions, but sometimes can take away from discussion if you wanted to get in depth into an issue. So Jennifer, does that capture kind of the landscape?
I think during the seven years that I was on, we had one or two two-day meetings where there was something, a really hot topic that people wanted to really dig into, so... But the agenda is always packed.
Perhaps on a lighter note, I'll say we've heard a lot today that we no longer say "thank goodness for Mississippi." I'm a native of Mississippi, so let's still say "thank goodness." Get a little offended.
Not anymore.
Very good.
Well, thanks. Oh, yeah, Lee.
I appreciate that Erin stayed as long as he did today, and I really think he has a lot, his willingness to be open to this school-to-work transition or the fact that not all college has to be four-year, go secondary education, which sometimes I think you used to get that out of CPE. It was more of a focus on that approach. But we have to get across in this state that there's a need for trained personnel that are trained in areas that will satisfy them in their lives and that will contribute to the economy and contribute to their lifestyle, but trying to buttonhole everybody into something is tough. And I don't know how you really get to this problem about trying to have children to know in the eighth, ninth grades what they might want to do so you can direct them someplace. It's tough because, you know, I had no idea in eighth, ninth grade what I might ever want to do, and so it took a while. But I think it's great to think about it because that's an issue. And I told somebody at lunch that, I used to be on this business higher education forum where they had CEOs of Fortune 500 companies and university presidents, and the head of recruiting for Boeing stood up one day, and he said, "You know, I don't think I've ever fired an engineer because they couldn't do engineering, but I fired many of them because they couldn't get along with people, they couldn't write, they couldn't speak, and so forth." And then he kind of looked up at the ceiling and he said, "You know, this thing we used to call soft skills, I really think are hard skills. And you and the universities need to realize that you've got to prepare these people to work with other people and to work around the world and to so forth." So it's time that we face up to the fact that some of the hard boundaries we used to have in my days going through, and you had to take all these hours, you need to make sure that they're not necessarily softer, but they're more realistic for what's coming at you when you get out.
I appreciate Lee saying something about Erin's, you're saying something about Erin's participation, and I think it deserves saying, in my experience, the position that the lieutenant governor holds and the position that Erin holds, their participation is a significantly higher level than any I ever experienced in my earlier time. Is that unfair to say, Kevin?
It amazes to me, it amazes me that they've done that.
The next item of business is internal board business, and this is a discussion on media and communications and the best practices. Interim Director of Communications, Tony, that we all know as Tony, is going to do that presentation.
We're glad to have you here, Tony.
Thank you for having me. All right. I also have Jennifer Ginn, Assistant Director of Communications, and I appreciate you allowing us to postpone this from last month. I was only two days into the job, so I wanted to make sure I prepared some helpful tips for you as you venture into your role as state board members. So do, if you want to help me. So just, for starters, just a reminder of who we are at the Department of Education and what we're doing in communications. We're, we essentially create news releases, media, meeting advisories, newsletters, social media messaging, graphics, stories for Kentucky teacher, and other items of importance relating to our public schools and the Kentucky Board of Education. In addition, we respond to media inquiries and questions and assist with communications needs for the entire department. We also manage and maintain the department's website. Our biggest mission really is to tell our story and the story of not just our department, but our schools. And the top bullet there is the mission of the department, which is to partner with our districts and schools, families, students, business, industry, and communities to provide leadership and support to ensure success for each and every student. We have over 648,000 public school students in Kentucky, and we should be showing and not talking about the goals and priorities that we have. Branding is important and essential to what we do, and it's really important that when we are out talking about our schools and our students that we are showing instead of talking. Social media. I know a lot of you have asked about social media, and so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. Social media can be a positive tool for fostering community engagement. School board members tend to have more freedom in terms of social networking, but with that freedom also comes responsibility. As a board member, you should operate with appropriate guidelines when you're communicating about Kentucky Board of Education business. And you should always follow the public official's golden rule. Don't blog, tweet, or post anything you wouldn't want splashed on the front page of the daily newspaper. These are just some other guidelines, and this PowerPoint will be available for you to look at. I don't want to have to go through all of this, but just clarifying that, you know, if you are going to participate in social media to communicate, if you are committing as an individual member, which you are obvious, you are entitled to do so, just to specify that you are speaking not as an official spokesperson of KDE or the Kentucky Board of Education. You can speak publicly about board matters, but to clarify that your statements reflect your own views and not necessarily the official position of the board. You should also avoid delivering, deliberating board business with, within a quorum of the board. Board members should not use online communications as a vehicle to really discuss items that could potentially be discussed in a meeting because you don't want to risk violating Kentucky's Open Meetings Act. And such communications also undermine really what the relationships and the purpose of open meetings. You may come across direct complaints or concerns brought to you as a board member about a school or some particular issue, and just make sure that you get those to the appropriate KDE administrator so that we can take care of those for you. And when a community member presents you with a concern, even online, just remember that, that kind of just reiterates what I just said, so. Board ethics and conflict of interest policies apply to social media outlets. Don't use social media to share closed-session materials and/or information that is protected by law. You should always keep the tone conversational and informal, use proper grammar, and show the same sensitivity regarding word choice that you would in other venues. If this is difficult, if you, you know, have somebody follow behind you and use a proof reader. I know a lot of people that do that. We were able to do that in the Communications Department. Social media is a commitment. If you start a page, it's better to, to keep it updated so that people know that they're going to come to you and, and can have a conversation with you. And also, it's important to be transparent, to let people know who you are and what you stand for, and don't hide behind anonymity. How you can help as board members. Stay on top of the department KDE news and take every opportunity to share the information that illustrates what our public schools are doing and why we need our community's help to help make sure all of our students are succeeding. We in the Communications Department will tag you in tweets and on Facebook posts. Please retweet and share those items. We are particularly looking to see which districts you are in, and, you know, I know you're, of your interest in particular districts. If you don't have a Twitter account or a Facebook account that you would like to use for these purposes and are interested in setting one up, please check with us, and we can help you get those set up. In other, in another way, backup statements. Instead of saying, you know, "We need more resources to reach more children," or "We can't afford any more infected mandates," with stories about how that impact can help our schools. Again, it's more of the showing with words versus the telling. Jargon and statistics and acronyms are very, very important to avoid, particularly in education. When in doubt, define the abbreviation at least once in a post and include definitions page on your site. Talk more about our students, teachers, principals, and their challenges, successes, and needs rather than about dollars and cents, the latest education jargon or statistics that nobody understands. Email. Remember that email is neither private nor confidential and may be subject to Kentucky's open records law. Always use the subject line and be short in description. Avoid colored or animated backgrounds and use fonts. These are not accessible and are distracting to those with special needs. If you need help setting up a KDE-approved auto signature on messages, you can also check with us in the Communications Department, and we can help you with this as well. If you need support, we are here. Keep in mind that if the media are, if you're working with media, they do work on tight deadlines. We can help you work with the media to get, to meet those deadlines, and you can also call us to help. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Does that mean no more emojis? Black and white, aren't we? Does any member of the Kentucky Board of Education have a question for... Thank you very much for the presentation, and it's safe to say that if you have any questions, Tony is available for you to call and speak with, and she'll be happy to... She drags me into the room to talk to the press and tells me many words that I needed to hear. It's helpful, so.
I was gonna, I was gonna add one more thing, too, that I thought of during your board sharing. Those are opportunities, too, that I saw that when you're visiting schools, I was thinking of Jennings Creek, if you visit during schools during the time from board meeting to board meeting, that's a great opportunity to share that you were at a school and saw something. It doesn't have to be something special. You don't have to do a special report, but just to give a shout out to a school or maybe a teacher that you saw or things like that.
That's my good news report name.
Awesome. So that's just, you know, it's a good idea, that that's a good time to share something like that, too. So just an idea to keep in mind. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion in consideration for approval of the recommendation from the RFP evaluation team for the solicitation for services to conduct the national search for the Commissioner of Education. This is an action item, and I will ask Lee Todd and Cody Polly Jackson to provide a recommendation and background for the board.
Cody and Sharon and I make up the evaluation team for the RFPs that came in, and we did meet last week, and we did not find one that we felt was of sufficient quality to begin this search. The request for the proposals was put out slightly before Christmas. That might have limited some of the applications, but we think that it's worth going out again and trying to get best commissioner we can find, and we didn't feel like that was going to happen with the ones that were presented to us. Cody, you want to add anything to that?
Then we would need a motion to authorize the Kentucky Department of Education to reissue the solicitation for services to conduct a national search for Commissioner of Education.
I move.
Lee has moved, and Cody has seconded that. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
May I say one other thing?
Absolutely. Motion, if I can say, the motion is adopted. Please, yes.
The, if you have any thoughts on any search firms that you're aware of that you think might be appropriate, we can add those to the mailing list as well. And we had suggested that they might talk to Gene Will Hoyt and some others that have served, Holliday, who's served in this capacity before, if they've come across any other search firms that they would recommend. So, so we're, they're aware that we're trying to build a better list, but I do think we get more response if, when it goes out this next time, I hope.
Speaking of next time, do we have a timeline of when we're going to get the new RFP out?
With this, with the approval by this board, I have confidence that the commissioner, the interim commissioner will be as aggressive as possible. Is that a fair statement? He, he wants a new commissioner worse than...
Yeah. We'll balance those desires with that of making sure it's out long enough to get responses.
Very good. Anything else on that one?
But do you have a, Robin, do you have a rough ballpark or Jennifer on just ballpark on what we're looking at of pos, just a general timeframe of when the board might come back and to vote on the final selection of a search firm? We're looking at March, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, early March.
The next item on the agenda is an update on the survey to solicit feedback on the characteristics of the next Commissioner of Education. This is a review item, and I would ask Chief Enforcement Officer, I'm sorry, Performance Officer Karen Dodd and Interim Director of Communications, Tony, to step forward and handle this item. I think it sounds so cool. Chief Enforcement Officer.
Okay. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on how the survey was prepared, how it's being disseminated, and the response rate so far. First of all, we looked at, we took something from the Council of Chief State School Officers, CCSO. They have a self-assessment for chief state officers or commissioners of education. And in the past, we have used that for self-evaluation for our commissioners here at the department. So we thought that it made sense to, to start with what somebody would be held accountable for, and so that is the document that we shared with each of you last month and asked you to rate your top five characteristics or behavior that you would be most interested in looking for in a commissioner for the department. That pretty much formulated our first question, and we're asking folks to, to rate each one of those on, that they must have it, they, what was it? Sorry. That it is an essential characteristic, very important, somewhat important, or not necessary. We also looked at the survey that was done in 2015, so this was after Dr. Holliday left. We did a similar survey. We did a similar survey, and we looked at the results of that, which was also a community-wide survey. And some of the things that popped up were communication and, what was the other one, Toni? Communication and experience, education experience. So the next two questions on the survey are based on the feedback that we received several years ago when we did this. And then we just had an open-ended question. If there was anything that folks want to let us know or other things that they want to look for outside of what we have already asked for, they have the opportunity to add any comments that, that they would like. Toni, you want to talk about the dissemination piece?
Yes. So, we developed the survey. It was done through Survey Monkey. As soon as that was developed, the questions were, we threw it out through social media, Twitter, Facebook, also sent it out to all of our K groups, our partners, all of our school employees, pretty much every, everybody. We pushed it out pretty, pretty fast. Had great, we've had a great response rate. We've also been pushing it out not, not every day, but also on different times. So like on Saturday, you know, we initially pushed it out like on a Tuesday, so then we thought, you know, we need to get it out on the weekend, too. And the survey is, is to the point where you can only take it once, so once you take that link, you can't take it again from the same computer. And I think it's also important to add that these are just qualities that people are looking for. This is not, you know, you guys have not put together, you know, a job description or anything like, this is the very first step. So these are just qualities. We will come to you with what the results say at a later time, you know, and that there's, there's still time to respond to this as well, so we're still looking for some more feedback. And I think she has the numbers for you.
Yeah, so as of right now, and Commissioner Brown already shared this, this morning, I ran the numbers again at lunchtime. We're up to 3,292 responses right now. Primarily, we have district employees and school-based employees. Those are our two biggest groups that we're receiving feedback from. And we also have been working with KY Stats, Kentucky Center for Statistics. They're going to be doing the reporting for us, so we've already, Toni and I have both met with them to discuss what the reports will look like as those come out, so we'll be able to see results from each of the respondent groups, what their top five priorities are. So it should be a pretty, pretty slick report. We're, we're really excited that KY Stats agreed to work with us and get that out really quickly.
And the results of the survey will be put, we do have it, we have also designated a spot on our website that will be anything with the commissioner search. You probably could see that it's on our homepage now. It is a work in progress, but anything that is related to the commissioner search will go to live on there, and the results of the survey and the, and this survey study will also go there as well.
Does any member have a comment or question? Thank you all very much for your presentation. The next item on the agenda is a discussion and approval of members to the whole school, whole community, whole child subcommittee. I, I would like to ask the board to approve members to serve on the whole school, whole community, whole child subcommittee. This committee meets at least quarterly and has two board members who are appointed by the chair. Other members are representatives from school health-related organizations and constituents. The committee reviews and makes recommendations to the full board on school health policies. I would like to, to name the following members to the whole school committee. Cody Polly Johnson and Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman. If that is all right, I need a motion to approve those appointments.
Motion made.
Mike has moved. Joanne has seconded it. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The next item is a discussion and question about approval to renew membership in the National Association of State Boards of Education. This is an item I will turn over to Kevin.
I'm bringing forward a recommendation that the board renew membership in the National Association of State Boards of Education. Membership in, in this organization was not renewed by the last board. I've been involved with NASB since through, NASB has an affiliated affinity group for the attorneys that advise state boards of education, so I've been involved since 2005 with that group, and Kentucky has been involved with NASB since at least the mid-'90s, maybe before that. In addition, NASB has another affiliate affinity group called the National Council of State Board Executives, Education Executives, which are the Jennifer Frakers of every state and the Marion Millers of every state. So, that's also a beneficial organization. We have a memo there that NASB prepared for us regarding the membership details and benefits. The pricing level for membership is based on statewide student population is how that is priced. I, I don't, I can't, I, I believe we should be involved in our affiliate group in DC. There are currently 36 states that are members of NASB, out of 46 states that are eligible to be members. And in addition, we have had a leadership post in this organization. Todd Allen most recently sat on the NASB board as the president of the National Council of State Education Attorneys. I did that several years ago. There are a lot of benefits to the organization, as with any organization, national organization, to interact with individuals from other states, gather ideas. Their conferences are good. They also provide services directly to states. We've received some grant funds from NASB in the past on some work around child nutrition, I want to say. So you can read the memo, or you've had it to read, and I'm recommending that we renew our membership.
Move approval. Motion has been made by, I'm sorry.
He's, I was seconding.
Lee has made the motion, Claire has seconded the motion to rejoin NASB. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Well then, well then, the next item on the agenda is approval of board members to attend NASB's March Legislative Conference. The, Kevin will inform the board of NASB's March Legislative Conference, which occurs on March 22nd to 24th, and suggest that we consider sending two members. Per board policy, the board must approve membership on, must approve membership on an in-state and out-of-state study groups, task force, and boards, and out-of-state conventions meeting attendance. So I will need a, a motion to approve two members to attend the NASB Legislative Conference. We polled, we had four members interested, two is what we always are able to send. We did cleverly a lottery to see which of the four were going to be two, and it turns out that Lou Young and Allison Stone are the two who I need a motion to approve their attendance at this meeting. Alvis has made a motion, and Patrice has seconded that motion that they be approved in this, for this travel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would add, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Can I say, all those opposed?
Sorry.
Then the ayes have it, and the chair recognizes Kevin Brown, interim commissioner.
Sorry, I jumped the gun. This, the NASB Legislative Conference is held in conju, not in conjunction, but at the same time that the Council of Chief State School Officers has their legislative meeting. That started occurring several years ago, so the, and the Council of Chief State School Officers is a membership organization for commissioners, so that NASB and CCSSO could have a better relationship. So there's an opportunity there for those two organizations to work together, and then obviously, these meetings are in DC because they're legislative meetings. We also try to coordinate visits to the Hill to members of Kentucky's delegation, and we were, try to be pretty strategic about that because we, we don't have a lot of time to do that, and they don't have a lot of time, but we try to definitely hit members that are on the Education Committee or in leadership about education issues, both at the state and federal level. So we will try to, we were gonna, we will work that in that trip as well.
All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of a special meeting on February the 25th. The board will need to call a special meeting for the appeal of the River Cities Academy Charter School application, which was denied by the Newport Independence Board of Education. I need a motion to approve a special meeting on February the 25th, 2020, for this appeal.
I'll move.
Patrice has moved. Holly has seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I think, based on some information I've had, it's probably a two-hour, likely to be a two-hour meeting, and probably maybe starting at 10:00 in the morning or something, so if it works out that way, we'll. That way, I won't have to get up at 5:00 in the morning like I had to to get here, to get my picture taken. I can sleep this evening. The next item on the agenda is discussion and approval. Oh, this is, now we're talking about the April meeting. So, we need a discussion and approval to amend the April meeting location to Lexington, Kentucky. I think we've all talked about this. This is where we, why don't you, on both these items, Kevin, just explain what's going on here about the schedule and stuff. We have to approve both of these things, but, and there'll have to be that, a special meeting, but we'll take them one at a time, but the schedules, we were talking about originally, one day would be that the computer deal, and the next day would be the board meeting, and now appears it's going to be, the best recommendation is a bifurcated situation. So, for the record, if you would tell us what's planned.
That's correct. And the STLP championship keeps growing every year, and upon further discussion with our technology folks, and there was a little bit of confusion between the department and the Lexington Convention Center as to scheduling the rooms, there was a need to have the bulk of the competition on the 9th to maximize the space at Rupp Arena and in the Convention Center. That would basically, that would have interfered with our board meeting, so we're going to move some items to a special meeting on April the 8th, so folks will come in midday on April the 8th. We'll have some items on that agenda for that afternoon. Folks that are from out of town, spend the night there in Lexington, will have, will resume board meeting at, or will go to the STLP championship that morning through around 1, 1 o'clock. That's the, we're told that's the bulk of the championship. We will then resume the state board meeting that afternoon, and then we will be finished in time for those that want to stay for the awards.
So the first motion that I need is a motion to approve the April meeting location to Lexington.
Motion made.
Michael has, may I call you Michael?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Actually, that's what my mother called me when I was born.
She called you that when she was angry, too?
Yeah.
Louis seconded it. So all those in favor of moving the meeting to Lexington, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda.
Quick, quick question or comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Hotel reservations will be a major chore for that because of the STLP competition.
We've already been working on that.
Oh, good job.
Yes, so we've got a block of rooms, so just, I think in your folder, Joette had left maybe a note, no, just kidding. She's going to reach out after the meeting and see who wants a hotel room that evening. But yes, we're already on it.
I knew you would be.
My question was, Jennifer, are we still meeting on the 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, so the 8th would be midday, we would get there, and in fact, we made one little thing that we're going to bring up in just a second, is the awards committee will actually meet first on the 8th, probably 1:00 to 2:00, and then you all will come together at 2:00 to probably 5:00 or so, and then STLP the next day, and then resume in the afternoon. Got it.
So while we're talking about that, there was some discussion about whether, it helped me hear about whether we would want to get together and have a dinner together?
Yeah, absolutely. So maybe on the 8th, if you all, especially those that are staying, would like to arrange for a dinner, of course, in, in Todd's benefit, no business to be conducted.
Absolutely.
And we'll make sure we note that.
Very good. I, I would think the board members would be interested, those who are there, to stay for, so.
Okay, so we'll make that arrangement as well.
That'd be great. And we're not talking about Kevin cooking something at his apartment, either. So, we now, did I do approval of, I'm losing my track here, did we do approval of the special meeting on the 8th? I know, no, we did not. We moved, we approved the, we approved the, moving the meeting to Lexington. Now we need a motion to approve the board, special board meeting on the 8th.
I'll move.
It's moved by Joanne, seconded by Alvis, that we approved that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Now we need an approval of the awards committee to meet on April the 8th, which you discussed. So is there a motion to approve the awards committee meeting? Claire has moved, Lee has seconded that motion to approve the meeting on the 8th of the awards committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there, at this point, Todd, or Jennifer, or Kevin, any other business that needs to come before the board? Is there any member of the board who has any other business they need to try to bring up? Cody, would you please make a motion, then, that we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
And, very good. Motion's been made, it's seconded, and this meeting is adjourned. I thank you all enormously for your participation and patience. It's a, as Alvis noted, is a long agenda, but everybody has really been diligent, and I'm very grateful.
Yeah, we're about two hours early.
Thank you for the afternoon.